Welcome to the October AMSA Board Meeting. My name is Roger Jaren, I'm Chair of the Board. We're going to start with opening items and then calling the meeting to order. We have a quorum and I believe 100% attendance of the Board Trustees. This meeting will be recorded and is recording as we speak. And we are streaming live on Facebook as well. At the end of this meeting, we will be going into executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate, as discussing an opening session would not be productive for the Board, and we will not reconvene. Looking for a trustee to be timekeeper for tonight's meeting.
Jess raised her hand.
Jess did raise her hand.
I did raise my hand, did you need me to speak? I'm willing to do it, I don't want to be the timekeeper hog if somebody else would like a turn doing that, you know.
You do a great job.
We should, I'll accept that volunteering, but I do think that it's important that other trustees take their turn at the challenge. So Jess, you are a timekeeper, thank you very much for volunteering. Next, we will be going into public speak. I'd like to say a couple of words before we enter the public speak section, that in public speak is an opportunity for the public to address the Board and share your thoughts and comments. I ask that you identify yourself, say what topic you're going to talk about, and be respectful in your comments, that they should be on topic and respectfully address the Board. And also, for the Board members, one thing we're going to try to do slightly differently is an attempt at improving our process, is that both at the end of the public speak section and at the end of the parent and teacher comments, I'm going to ask if there's anything that was raised that we would like to flag and discuss further at the end of the meeting. So I will be asking that at the end of both public speak and the parent and teacher comments. So with that, Liz, I would like to pass the baton to you to coordinate people who have communicated to you for public speaking.
Yep, and I think as I just mentioned, right now, the only person that has been identified is Anthony Montesian, so we're going to have him kick it off. If anyone else would like to make a public comment, if you can just send me an email at l.saul@amsascs.org and I will put you on the list. But Anthony, I would like to give you the floor.
Thank you very much. My name is Anthony Montesian, and I am here as a member of the school community, and I am going to read a statement regarding AMSA's race and equity training and some of the feedback that was provided at the last Board meeting in September. During the faculty representative portion of last month's Board meeting, I was stunned when criticism was provided anonymously from a colleague expressing intense disdain for AMSA's professional development around racism and equity. I found it incredibly disheartening and disturbing to hear another professional in our school publicly name-call our facilitator in order to diminish the importance of the work we are all engaged in. If anything, that person's words and thoughts demonstrates how critical it is that we remain committed to doing this important work. AMSA is a place that must truly live its commitment to ensuring that children of all backgrounds can excel, and it cannot do that unless it seeks to continue to grow and learn. I, for one, am grateful that we will continue to move forward with this training. I believe it is both right and necessary in order for the school to achieve its mission. Every AMSA adult that I've interacted with around the racial equity training has found it to be of enormous importance and found our facilitator, Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson, to be both incredibly skilled and highly engaging and effective. Not one AMSA adult that I've spoken to has felt otherwise. I believe that racism has no home at AMSA, and that nearly every adult who works here is committed to continuing to grow through intense and deliberate work around racism, equity, and privilege. I am grateful for the AMSA administration and the Board's continued commitment to racial equity training. I am also grateful for the overwhelming number of my colleagues who have stepped forward to express their support and commitment to this work. Their efforts to stand up and be heard when confronted with the meanness and degradation expressed by others at the last Board meeting is both reassuring and inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montesian. Is there anyone else? I don't have any emails, is there anyone else on the call who also wanted to make a public comment at this time? Okay, Roger, I think I'll hand it back to you for the discussion on this topic.
All right. Thank you, Liz, and thank you, Mr. Montesian, for your comments. For both the Board and for people listening, the Board has received at least 11 additional pieces of feedback, letters, passionate letters from our staff and community, also in support of the diversity and equity training. They are attached in the notes, in the documentation for the meeting, and will be available at the end of today's meeting, when we publish our meeting notes. So that is available for your reading. Don't think that it's good use of our time to read all of these passionate letters to the public at this point. So onward to Board discussion of this, I'd like to start-
Actually, Roger, Liz, if you don't mind, I'd just like to interject for one second. I don't want to dismiss or undermine the letters that we received. We've read them all, they are extremely passionate, and they are extremely supportive of the training. And it just became clear this afternoon that, given the number that we have received with overwhelming support, it just seemed like there'd be, you know, a lot of redundancy if we were to go through and read every single letter. That being said, it is very important, the letters are all in the agenda, they'll all be included in the meeting minutes as well, and I would encourage everyone to go through and read them because they are, you know, extremely, extremely supportive of the training, as is the Board. You know, we upfront, you know, funded the training. Ellen found the person to do this work and to consult with AMSA, and we do think it's very important work, and that's, I just want to make sure that by not, you know, by us not reading the letters, it in no means is meant to diminish how important those letters are. So I just thought it was important that we make that note.
Yes, Liz, I'm glad you said that. I kind of took my mic off about the same time you did. It was very heartening to read all of those letters, and the emails that we, I'm sure we all got, personal emails as well, and the overwhelming theme from the whole thing was, it was the right thing to do with the training, it's something that's necessary, and it was done well. And everyone that has responded, other than the one letter that we heard the last time, was very positive about how that training affected them and should continue in the future. So I was really happy to read all those letters, and thank the people for sending them. Thank you.
So it looks like we are starting into the discussion already, but I wanted to start by saying, you know, the diversity training is most important for us, for us as a school, for us as a society in general, it is a challenge that we all face. First, diversity and inclusion is part of the AMSA mission. The AMSA mission is to create an atmosphere of celebration, of knowledge, where children of all backgrounds and abilities excel in all subjects, especially math, science, and technology, empowering them to succeed in the workplace in our modern high-tech world. It aligns with our core values, model integrity, pursue excellence, and foster community. And it aligns with our vision to emphasize challenging curriculum, to create a school culture that fosters trust, respect, pride, persistence, and a sensible longing in a caring, inclusive, and accepting environment. You know, this is, this really is part of the essence of AMSA. Little more history as far as things that we have already done and things we will be doing. The Board and the administration in the July timeframe met with students, alumni that put up the Black at AMSA page to address, understand, and address some of their concerns, who are still working. It is clearly a work in progress. I think Ellen's ideas to pursue the diversity inclusion training came in part from that, or were reinforced by that discussion. The Board, the Finance Committee approved the funding for the training. We, as a Board, also did in the last meeting a diversity exercise, and we will be planning in the January timeframe to be having our own Board off-site meeting to receive our own piece of the diversity and equity training from the same facilitator as part of the package that we purchased. So we, I individually, and we as a Board have demonstrated our continued support for this, for this effort that's so important for us as a society and as a school, and it is part of our mission. And I thank Ellen for all the work that she has started and will continue to do. And oh, one more thing, one of Ellen's goals for the year will be a diversity and inclusion goal. So we are 100% in support of the training and of the overall goal of following the path and learning more, becoming better in the diversity and inclusion area. Other Board members wish to comment?
Roger, if I could, this is Sheila Kelly, I'm the Chair of the Governance Committee, and I just wanted to express, well, first, I want to apologize. I think last month, when the letter was read, I was in kind of stem silence, and I feel responsible now for not speaking up then, so I do want to apologize for that. But I'm glad we're having this opportunity tonight to talk about it, and I agree with Mr. Montesian's thing, that statement, that there was a lot of name-calling in that letter that wasn't particularly productive, and I think it goes counter to what our philosophies and our core values are. So I want to reiterate what Liz and what Roger have said, that the Board is in full support of Executive Director Lindsay and this effort to continue to grow as a community, just like the entire country and countries worldwide are trying to do right now. And I just want to reiterate for people that, I feel this as an attorney, especially the last month with the loss of Justice Ginsburg, but, you know, there's a quote that's floating around right now, that is, "If you've never had a Supreme Court decide if you have the same rights as others, you have privilege." So I think it's something we need to think about, and we might not see it, we might not be actively discriminating against someone, but we can always learn how to make our systems better and how to make ourselves better, and I encourage that, and I look forward to our training on that in January. And I am so grateful to the staff and the teachers at AMSA who have reached out to me and the other Board members and given us your thoughts to know that this really is a minority viewpoint, and that means a lot to me as well. So I just want to make that clear as a trustee, so thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you. Go ahead, Maura.
Thanks. Thank you. I just wanted to, I had prepared remarks, and I joked with Roger that I tend to talk too fast, so I write things down. I want to start by reiterating what I said to a few faculty members that I was able to touch base with after they emailed us. I too, Sheila, feel the same exact way. I was in complete shock after Jess's report, and simultaneously upset that I had nothing to say at that moment. I've been trying to the best that I can to do the work and to learn, especially about how to use my voice and my reach more in advocating for racial justice and anti-racism in our community here at AMSA and really everywhere that we touch. I kind of look at this as my wake-up call, as I feel like I personally failed the faculty and the students with my silence, and for that, I too, I'm sorry. It's not easy, right? I've been kind of stewing over the best way to respond, because I think it's important. I know I've had lots of conversations with parents about what they heard as well last month, and so it's important that I think we, as a Board, share what we're thinking, right now that we've all had time to process. We're not here to be comfortable, right? We're not here to sit back and coast, we're AMSA. We strive for excellence, we value excellence, integrity, and community, and we value every person in that community. Community is all-encompassing. So when one or even many voices in that community speak up, we listen. That's what we do. We value and we respect them and their experiences, and we grow and learn together. As a teacher and a coach, and especially as a parent, I know that in order to always be better and do better, the only way is to be open to learning. Things that may be new will most likely challenge us and what we think we know, and it's hard. It takes that inner work and looking at ourselves and what we've learned. It requires asking a ton of questions, and we have to be willing to really hear and not just listen and dismiss it. We need to practice love, grace, and kindness in all that we do, and that includes letting go of judgment to ourselves or for ourselves as we learn to do what's actually needed and called of us. We here are all responsible for shaping our worlds, and I think the role that's taught me that the most is being a mom. I found the remarks we heard last month to be full of what everyone else has said, unprofessional aggression, name-calling, politicized commentary and fear, disrespect for a professional, and our students, especially our Black students, and quite honestly, rhetoric and jargon that's not in line with excellence, excellence, integrity, or community. We wouldn't tolerate that behavior from our students, anonymous or otherwise, and it's not okay. I want to be able to truly hear the thoughts of all of our people, right? Faculty, staff, students, parents, even when I disagree, so that I, as part of this group, can make the best decisions for the greater good of our community. That's what we're here to do. And honestly, to do that, I had to dig through to find the actual feedback. And, you know, while, while I'd love to share with the teacher and me red-penned, it's not productive. But what it does do is show us that we have a long way to go, and that dissenting opinions can be expressed respectfully so that they can be fully heard. I am grateful for the faculty, the staff, and the parents that have shared their thoughts and feedback with me and have reached out, and we've had conversations, so that we can hear and understand the full picture. And just to wrap up, in order to eliminate hatred, we need to start by being open to hearing differing opinions and hearing other points of view respectfully. To really and truly be heard, we need to first respect each other and show up to the discussion with an open mind, open ears, and an open heart, because there's no room for racism, like, none. And so I'm glad that all of these teachers have come and come forward, and again, I have taken the lesson of speaking up even though I might not have the perfect words in the right moment, but it has been a month of kind of beating myself up for being quiet. So, thanks.
Thank you, Maura. I'd like to go next, this is Raul Porres, and the Vice Chair for the Board of Trustees. I like the fact that I've been thinking about something to say in today's Board meeting, and I've heard Roger, and Maura, and Sheila, and Liz, even up to this point, say a lot of the things that I was thinking about. So, you know, it's always hard to represent the whole Board, when for us to come up with something that represents the whole Board, we have to discuss it in the Board, and we cannot do that unless we're in an open meeting. So there's really a little opportunity for us to do that before we actually speak publicly. So it's always tough to say, "This is the Board speaking." So I always say, "This is myself speaking," and I'm sure the others in the Board will agree with me. But if I were to add from what I just heard, the summary of the letters we received, so if you don't have an opportunity to go read them, I will say that they're all along Mr. Montesian's comments of support of the training. Some of them explicitly want, and I think this is a great thing that happened as a result of this conflict, is they are calling out how supportive they are of the administration and the job that this administration has been doing for them, which is historically not something that the Board has heard. So that needs to be called out, how teachers felt like they got the support of the administration. I also know that some of those letters include stories of why this topic is personally relevant for some of the people that wrote it. So I want to thank those people for actually sharing their stories. Everybody has their own story that may show why this is an important topic, and we are not always sharing those, and that may leave some to think that this is not an issue that should be dealt with. So, you know, you sharing your story goes a long way of helping us understand that this is worth all the training we can get. As Sheila Maura said, I agree, I put myself in that, I've been kicking myself as well for not speaking up. We missed an opportunity as a Board to respond categorically to what we heard last month, and we did it, and I'm speaking for myself again, I did it out of an abundance of caution, because it's hard to respond on the spot without risking a negative discussion to take place, and I didn't want that to happen. But I also have learned, and I'll keep an eye on that, I like using the words of Dale Carnegie that said, "We have to be hearting in approbation and lavish in our praise." We have always looked for opportunities to confirm the things that we believe in and the work that others are doing, and as a Board, we need to be cheerleaders for the school. And I'll keep an eye on that going forward. I think we missed an opportunity to do that in the last Board meeting, and hopefully we're trying to fix that today and going forward. Roger, talk about the efforts that the Board has done. So if anybody thought based on the last Board meeting that the Board is not behind this training or the diversity efforts, I would love to prove you wrong with everything we have done up till now and whatever we do after today. But he gave some examples of how we have been participating in the conversations. I think particularly the conversations with Black at AMSA go a long way of showing people how a lot of these issues are issues, so they exist in the school and they need to be dealt with, even though you may not have personally experienced them, or you don't know anybody that has been affected. We have heard that this has happened, and we know, we need to take responsibility for doing something about that. Also, along those lines, we want to make it clear that when we request for more details about the training, it was, and again, I'm speaking for myself, I agree with that approach because there were some accusations being made by the feedback that was shared, and I wasn't personally involved in those trainings, so I didn't know what happened in the trainings. And after we reviewed the content, and we reviewed the feedback, and we reviewed the comments that everybody had, at least, again, speaking for myself, I have no concerns about those accusations being based on what actually happened during the training, and the content of the training, in my opinion, is very appropriate and very helpful for where we are today at AMSA. I didn't think it was political at all, or had any connotations, other than the fact that we're in a moment in history where this is a political topic, but it will always be, but I don't think the training was inappropriate in any way based on the content that we reviewed. So that was the reason why we asked to review the content of the training, there was no other, and again, speaking for myself, we had no doubts that, and by the way, the Board was part of the decision of hiring Dr. Amonte Jackson, so we think that it has been a good decision, even now. The Board was not trying to validate the presenter and the topics, we were just trying to make sure that the accusations, whether the accusations were founded or not, and again, we have no concerns. So again, we learned that we shouldn't stay silent, even if we had a hard time finding the right words. So I'll make sure that we continue to improve in that regard, and I think what Roger mentioned as a waste, give us an opportunity within the Board meeting to respond to comments, should be part of our process. We also need to make sure we do it the right way. I do want to point out, and Maura mentioned this, that as uncomfortable as this may be, we should always welcome dissenting views into our Board meetings, because that's really the reason why we have Board meetings, we need to represent our community, and we need to bring all of the different perspectives into the Board meetings. So hopefully, this doesn't turn anybody down from bringing something that could be uncomfortable or can be different from what everybody else is talking about, because that is how we improve the school. That is how we make sure we understand what's actually happening at an AMSA, and I always make this comment when I say, "Hey, I don't have any students in the school yet, but I learned from what's happening in the school based on the Board meetings, based on Ellen's reports, based on the things that we can get from the surveys, but I'm not there in the school every day, I don't even have a student in the school." So I would welcome any dissenting views and things that, if they're done in the proper way and in a respectful manner, that should continue to be the case, we should not shy away from that. And there's always a silver lining, and like I said at the beginning, we heard a lot of great supportive things about the administration through the letters that were received as a response to the feedback that was shared last month. So that by itself is a positive thing that came out of all of this, and I would welcome that any day and any Board meeting. So thank you for listening.
I mean, Roger, there's really not much more to say. I mean, I really appreciate Raul's, and Mr. Montesian, and Maura, I mean, everyone really, and, you know, everyone really spoke from the heart. I think, you know, Raul made a lot of great points, we were all shocked and kind of surprised by the statement. It's very hard to react, you know, properly without getting both sides. Ellen did an amazing job afterwards, providing us with more of that feedback, that was, I think, a good ask to get that information. We could have been more supportive, and again, I was quiet, so I think that's important that we all realize that there's an opportunity to at least make a statement in how you feel at the moment, to make sure that everyone understands that it was not just something we glossed over and it wasn't something we didn't support. Again, I read the letters, and they're all very heartfelt, I think that's very great that the community has written those, has submitted those, and we all have those as on record to be able to read them, and it gives us a different perspective. I mean, we got Ellen's perspective, we got the anonymous perspective, but really, the sign of those 14 letters, I think they were, right, really drove home a lot of the messages that I think we all believe our core values are and that we want to push forward in our schools. So again, I applaud those folks that stepped up and made their voices clear. I think it's great, Mr. Montesian, for you to come on and read yours, because, you know, the delivery of that really drives your passion and your support of the community, and not only that you are a part of the staff, but, you know, you introduce yourself as part of the community. I think that's what we all are here on the phone in the Board, as part of the community and making AMSA better. So again, thanks for everyone's comments, and yeah, same as everyone has said, our silence was not a representation of our feelings or our thoughts, I think it just caught us off-guard, and through all the information that we provided, really, you know, shows support for everything that Ellen and the rest of the administration and faculty have been doing. It's been a great thing, and it's a journey, it's not a quick win or any kind of answer to this, right? It's all of us doing our part and all of us having our voice heard. So I appreciate all those letters and the opportunity to really think about this and digest it, and really makes you, you know, a part of this community and being strengthened in it. I don't think this broke us apart, I think this made us stronger, and we have a path forward to continue to work on this. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Other comments?
Just want to support what everybody is saying, this journey started back when we heard the brave students come forward with their challenges. As we've heard, I agree, and think everyone has made amazing comments, so I don't want to repeat, but we absolutely are supportive, the community is supportive, the faculty, the administration, everyone here really looks forward to, you know, taking this path and becoming more educated and supporting the students in the school, that's what we're here for. So thanks, everybody, for speaking up, and Ellen and everyone, we really, every day, we support everything you do.
Other comments?
I'm not a Board member, Roger, but would you mind if I stepped in for a moment?
Please.
Because I think some of our visitors may drop off after this, and, you know, I spoke to the staff yesterday and addressed this issue for just a few minutes with them, as a reminder that this is really about our students, right? This is about the kids, and making sure that when our kids graduate from AMSA, that they look back and they're proud of their school, they're proud of their community, they're proud to have come from AMSA, and that they don't walk away feeling that it was painful. Another piece is that our alumni stated that they didn't know who to come to in the administration, they didn't always feel like there was a safe place to go to, and we want to make sure that that's always there for them. Things happen when you have groups of people together, and sometimes things get said and people get hurt, sometimes there's just flat-out racism happening, and those kids need a safe place, they need to know where they can go, that they're loved and supported, and that we're going to help them figure it out, we're going to help fix it. And so it's about the kids. This is also about growth for our community. And, you know, I said to Roger and Raul earlier tonight, the hardest things that we go through are always the things that push us to grow the most. This has been a very painful- This has been a very painful experience. This last month has been has been painful at times. Because I want every member of our community to feel like they belong, including our adults. And the statement that was made made some of my adults feel like that they didn't, that they weren't safe and that's not okay. Our kids are safe, our adults are safe, and we are one community that can have different views and different opinions and that's okay. But we need to stay as one community and we need to to take care of each other. Racism is not welcome at AMSA. It never has been, even if we missed it, it will never be tolerated again. And I'm committed to this. I have found my voice in this area. That voice will never be taken away from me again. I will stand for every child in our school, no matter what color their skin is, what religion they practice, or who they are as individuals, what their IQ score is. Every child, every child, we will take care of every child. And so I thank my teachers who I love dearly. I thank them for their support. I thank them for the time. I read every single one of those letters and I've saved them. I thank them for um taking the time to uh to write those letters in support of this work because it's so important and in support of um of our community and in support of taking care of our kids. Mr. Montesian has been a friend of mine for a long, long time and I thank you. It's hard, it's hard to come on here and it's hard to speak. Um, and I thank you, my dear friend, for doing that. Um, I also thank my my very best buddy, um Dr. Lewis for being here tonight. Um, and he has supported me um without uh without hesitancy through this whole thing. And so um I thank you, uh board, uh for your support. I thank you for being supportive from the very beginning of this. Um, when I mentioned diversity work a year ago, um everyone supported it. And when everything um fell apart in June, all of you were there. And um you've supported us through the summer, making sure we had the budget that we needed, um cheering us on. We've got grants to cover the cost um and to continue to um to support me through over the weeks and and you really have. And I thank you for hearing my feedback after the meeting last month. Um, you came and you listened to me and you had open minds and open hearts and and I greatly appreciate that. So to the community of AMSA, we will continue this work because it's important, because all of us are equal in our value and our worth and we all need to respect each other, no matter where we come from, who we are, what we believe, or what the color of our skin is. We need to take care of respect and love each other and I thank you for the time.
Ellen, thank you for your passionate words and your continued work in this area. It is a long, long and challenging road that you've taken on and I applaud your applaud your efforts and passion. Thank you. Wow. Um, other comments?
I just want to say I've added mine to the chat. I think this is Samini Sampa. Um, Ellen, uh, thank you for all the work that you've been doing. My uh kids have gone through the school, uh and so I have some experience um of the of the atmosphere there and both the ups and the downs. Uh, so definitely really heartened to see the more deliberative uh efforts that we're making and we will continue to make. Um, the one thing I want to also outline for us is that at the last meeting when Jess spoke, uh one, in fact, I went back and looked at the minutes of the meeting. Uh, she actually shared a lot of the positives first and then did make the comment around this one, uh, you know, the one comment. And I guess we ended up, you know, focusing on that. So I just want to also say that, yes, the positive comments were shared in the beginning. Um, and to have them reinforced through the letters is definitely something that I loved seeing, really liked all of the letters, uh helped me appreciate what the staff is thinking about. So thank you very much and again, very supportive of the actions that we're taking. Uh, I hope that this journey continues and we'll have more such discussions so that we can learn and grow from this experience.
All right, thanks, Samini. All right, um, so it sounds like we've reached a point I'd like to make a couple of closing comments. Um, first, I also would like to apologize for not finding the voice or to find a method to react to such to the feedback that we received. You know, I personally was stunned by the comments myself, but we do need, as other people have said, we do need to find a mechanism and we're trying, we are trying to introduce a new mechanism to help find a way for the board to receive the feedback and be able to discuss the important items that show up. I do think it is very important that we do hear dissenting opinions that are respectfully addressed to the board and we as board members have a duty of care to investigate and and look into things that are brought to our attention. But in the end, as Ellen said, it's all about the kids. It is all about our students. So we need to be focused on what is best for our students and this diversity and inclusion training is part of what's best for our students and we need to continue it both for our school and for our community and for our country and for our world so that it can be a better place than it is now. Well, with that being said, let's see if I can find the misplaced my agenda. Here we go. All right, we are completed, we are on to voting. So first up in the vote section, we have approval of the minutes from 24 September.
I have a question. Maybe for Sarah, um, on the parent representative section, the first sentence says, Mara Webster said, general feedback has been positive, but she has received some emails from parents that if I remember correctly, that was about the 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 going back to school and and the remote approach. Um, the minutes don't say what the feedback was about, so it could be misinterpreted. I don't know if we, it's worth adding a clarification, a general feedback on coming back to school or whatever.
Laura?
That would be great if we can clarify in the minutes that it was in your, sorry, Sarah?
And can you give me just a quick, um, I think at the time it was obvious, but then when the other things came in, it probably wasn't so obvious.
Right, um, I think it was just on the return to school and
Back on the return to school.
On the return to school, yeah.
Okay, I will add that.
And then Sarah, I sent you an email on 1G. It should be 2019, 2020. It says 2029.
Oh, didn't I fix that?
I don't know. It's not, it's not on the, I just wanted to make sure you saw my email.
I did.
Okay.
Other feedback for Sarah? Hearing no other feedback, I'll take a motion to approve the uh minutes with edits.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I
Cindy seconded.
Okay, Liz and Cindy?
Yes.
All right, uh, roll call vote as we always do, same order. And all votes in opens in the remote meetings are roll call votes. Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Uh, yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick? Samini?
Yes.
Jess?
Um, yes, and I would like to just sort of add in the little faculty minutes, it did say that I just, I I it's been a hard month for us all. It did say that I offered good stuff first and I appreciate Sarah that that was in the minutes. I just, I I'll address some things in my faculty report, but thank you, Sarah. So yes, I vote to approve.
I I
Laura?
That's the point that I was trying to make for your Jess because I do remember that. Uh, although the statement did stick in our heads, uh, I I do remember you offering all the positive feedback that came up from the training. So I just want to give a shout out to Jess that she tried to represent everything that had happened in the training.
Laura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger? Yes. Minutes approved unanimously. Next, um, first, I'd like to announce that we had a first ever executive session, executive committee of the board, which is very different than the executive session. The executive committee can, within our bylaws, can act as the full board for a subset of items and the executive committee met and approved the the for a contract to expand our internet access for AMSA. And the executive committee is Roger, Raul, Jill, Kristin and Liz. So those particular members will need to vote to uh approve the minutes from the executive committee meeting that was on the 13th of October.
I move to approve the minutes from
Second.
Second from Liz. Uh, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Um, yes, but doesn't the full board need to approve what we did?
Um, what's it? No, they, um, we just, as an executive committee, they, we just uh informed the board of our vote is my understanding.
Okay, I didn't know if, I I'm I'm a yes, but I don't know if we need the full board to to vote on it also.
No, I don't believe so, but I defer to Sheila to uh research and give us an answer on that.
So Roger, my understanding is that the actual vote that we took that day was enough for taking action on that topic. So we didn't need confirmation from the board and this particular vote is on the minutes, which I don't think anybody that wasn't in the meeting can have an opinion on.
Right.
Right, no, there, I think it is all
I just think that the full board needs to ratify what we did.
I would defer to Sheila to in to investigate that and if need maybe we can
If we do, we can vote on it next month.
Correct, so yeah, I'll look into that, Roger.
Right, and actually, if yeah, if you could, I'm, I'd like to understand what the the executive committee does, right? Just so we understand where that that line is and what the power of that executive committee can be when it does and doesn't have to come to us. That'd be interesting to to understand.
All right. It sounds like a request for governance for next month. All right, so we were back
I said yes, yeah.
Jill said yes and and raised the question about the process for approving items in that are approved by the executive committee. Uh, Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Roger, yes, motion passes unanimously. There in um for anybody else listening or listening to a this meeting, the uh the topic under discussion was for approval of expanded internet access and the documentation is attached to the meeting.
Uh, Roger, there is, there was one typo in that. I went back to find it, but you voted before I I I did find it. Um, let me pull it back up again. I just had it here. Uh, minutes, okay. Um, it says that um opportunity, it's after the word opportunity. Hang on, I gotta find it again. In the line about the E rate, it says um opportunity, the, the E rate. So I don't know what it was supposed to say, but that just needs to be fixed before it's put away forever. Okay. Sarah will find it.
Since that's, since that's a grammatical fix, I we, Sarah, please uh fix the the grammar on that one item and we'll approve them as amended by by Cindy. That's the approval of the executive committee. Uh, next up is an update to the student handbook and I'll pass the baton to Sheila to introduce that.
Thank you, Roger. Um, I'm shuffling papers here, so excuse that for a moment. Uh, so the governance committee met actually two meetings ago and I neglected to put it before the full board last month, so I apologize. Um, to add some language to the handbook, hold on, let me pull it up. Um, with regard to uh title nine, oh, I'm losing my space here. Sorry, give me one second. Okay, here we go. So we had um three documents that you guys, the board members should have been sent, the first of which is a non-discrimination and harassment policy, um new policy point five point one. Um, I don't know if people had a chance to review that, but it's just um laying out uh the protected classes that are, um, you know, there is zero tolerance for discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, homelessness, religion, age or immigration status. Um, and that we're committed to maintaining an environment free from harassment under those um classifications in addition to um, there are others too, which is pregnancy, pregnancy status, age or disability. I don't know if I in um included those in my initial grouping. Um, and it just also goes on to outline that Ellen will, or that the executive director will um and at least she'll designate someone to be their compliance officer. And I believe that's Mr. Montesian, is that correct, Ellen? Um, to investigate claims and etcetera. So that's the first document. Roger, do you want to take them one by one or do you want me to do all three and then we'll do a vote? You're muted.
You're unmuted.
One vote for the whole, for the whole package since governance has already uh approved this in detail.
Okay.
And I was just, Sheila, I was just going to mention that these were documents too that came from our lawyer, Michael Joyce.
Oh, yes, sorry, Ellen.
That goes along with the new laws that came into um effect uh in mid-August.
Correct. So um the next document is the civil rights grievance procedure, which is um AMSA policy five point two, which replaces an existing policy. Um, and this is the coverage under title nine. Um, so it again goes through to maintain that we have an environment free from discrimination based on those protected classes. Um, and uh goes through the title nine procedure. I don't know with regard to um non-title nine sexual harassment um and retaliation and the basis for how you make a complaint, um how complaints are investigated and assessed, um etcetera. So I don't know if people had any questions on that one, um after you read through it and again, um designates Mr. Montesian as our civil rights coordinator. Hearing no questions, I'm going to go on to the third document, which is a proposed addition to the AMSA student parent handbook. Um, this is regarding school-based non-contact orders, um in which the school reserves the right to issue a school-based non-contact, um which would outline ex- um expectations between students and how we would respond to mistreatment and how violations uh would be dealt with and that they could carry a maximum penalty of suspension from school up to 90 days. Um, are there any questions about that particular document? Is this, is this just, I guess I was confused by this one. Is this just kind of as basic as it says this year, the school can say no touching between the students? They can say no contact, well, I can let Ellen expand, but they can say no contact in that even, you know, that the students, almost like we would with a no contact order in the community where if if students were to see each other, they would have to make an effort to avoid coming into contact with each other. Ellen? For particular disciplinary actions, is that what you mean? Okay, okay. Not generic, no holding hands, no hugging, no Oh, no, not no contact like no PBA, no. No contact like there's, I'm sorry.
Kristin, I was with you. It must be because we are boys, but yeah.
No touching. Uh, yeah, so um no, no contact pursuant to a complaint or disciplinary action. Um, hearing no questions, I think we would need a motion to approve. Motion to approve the changes to the handbook.
Second it.
So, motion by Liz, second by Ben. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheila and the governance committee for your hard work on the topic. Um, next up, I'll pass the baton to Kristen and Leanna to, uh, go over the, uh, financial audit for the year. Typically, in a regular year, the auditors would present this, but because this is a COVID year, the, uh, DICE has allowed that the finance chair to present the, that the finance committee would approve the audit and then it would be presented to the board by the finance chair and our, and Leanna. With that introduction, I'll pass it to Kristen.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, just to summarize, uh, AMSA needs to go through a financial audit annually. And, uh, for another year successfully, the audit was a clean opinion with no findings and no issues to report by the auditors, which is fabulous. So congratulations to Leanna and Ellen and team for making sure that that, uh, happened again. It's a record. I think it's, it's been this way since, certainly since I've been here, and so it's wonderful. Um, I'm not gonna report, go through the board report because it's really just very standard audit accounting language. Uh, the financial statements, however, I will run through for folks quickly, as well as the draft of the ratios. The management letter also is another very formal accounting document that probably won't be interesting for folks unless you really have an interest in long-worded accounting language, but we'll have to read that later. This is what I do and I, uh, it's, uh, it's very standard by all, by all, by all means. So for the financial statements, I am going to, uh, quickly review this document with folks. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. Do I have to be given permission to share here? Am I all set with that possibly?
I think so. Kristen, do you see the share button on the bottom?
I think everybody at the beginning.
I see it.
Are we looking? You can see what?
Should be right on the very bottom of your screen. It should say, um, share screen in green.
Oh, I was actually on, I have multiple screens gone, folks, so I was looking at the wrong one here. Okay. Let's see. It should be coming up. Everybody see that? Can I get it? Okay, thumbs up. Thanks, Roger. So, uh, again, you see, the auditors provide a letter to the board of trustees. Uh, it outlines their clean opinion. Uh, it discusses their responsibilities and management's responsibilities. Uh, talks about the annual report, and then they draft a set of financial statements, uh, in alignment with, uh, governmental financial standards. Uh, it's a slightly different format than what we see on a monthly basis. Um, and in general, it talks about the highlights of the school, compares expenses, uh, for the year versus the previous year, and it also outlines, um, the cash flow of the school and the, the financial position, which, which we know is in a very good shape, and the auditors validate that. So, um, for the school year, for the audit, uh, we also have the STEM Foundation, which I think everyone has heard of, uh, which supports the school. And the financial statements include balances from the foundation on the consolidated basis, which again is something that we don't typically report on, on a monthly basis. So what, as you can see, the key points here are, uh, the total assets of the company, thirteen million dollars, with a strong cash position of seven point three million. And again, this is as of June 30th. Uh, and that, of course, ties to our liabilities and our net position. Our liabilities, one point four, five million, and our net position of eleven point nine. Uh, the second statement, uh, prepared, uh, is similar in that it walks through the, uh, change in net position. And so basically what it's doing is taking, uh, the numbers here and, and walking through how it gets there. So they take the assets of the company, uh, sorry, of the school, uh, it deducts the liabilities, and it, it looks at the restricted and unrestricted assets of the company, uh, to get to that net position and the change in net position of business. So of the company, of the school, sorry. I work in, I do this on, for corporate America, so I slip company with school, my bad. Um, you know, the changes in the net position, again, it includes the tuition, the revenue, it deducts the expenses. Uh, it looks at the student costs, the occupancy costs and the other operating costs, so it groups them into like categories. And that's gonna be meaningful in another section that we look at. Uh, it also looks at, uh, non-tuition-related revenue, and then again, it rolls forward to that, uh, non-restricted position. And again, this is really the equity of the company. Uh, the most important number, again, is, is the cash balance, as well as, you know, how does the revenue stack up year over year, which we talk about on a regular basis. Uh, some of these reports are fairly similar. Uh, again, this is the cash flow statement of the business. It shows that for the year, there was approximately one point seven million of cash flow derived during the year. Very favorable. A lot of that favorability last year was due to the school not being in session in person in the spring, uh, which is good because we're using that money to invest in the remote, uh, opportunities this year, as well as some of the grant money that the, that Leanna and Ellen and team have been able to provide through grants. Uh, and then we talk about accounting policies. Again, this is, you know, the basis of accounting and how they're formatted. Um, very definitional. It's, it's a pretty normal accounting process. The report is basically the same every year with an update of the numbers. A little bit of detail around the capital assets. This is always important. We don't look at this regularly, but the school owns the White Building. They, they purchased that a couple of years ago for just over four million dollars, and they've invested in furniture and equipment in the school, computers and software, obviously, is a large expense that we see on an annual basis, as well as various building, you know, and leasehold improvements. Last year was a, a, a pretty substantive investment in computers and software, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the ending balance this year therefore was seven point eight million dollars. Uh, assets depreciate over time, which provides the net value of those assets. Buildings and whatnot are amortized over a, a forty-year life period, whereas computers are done over three years. Again, it's a, it's just a net valuation of, of the capital assets for the end of the year. Uh, again, more detail around the leases. Retirement plans, and then additional detail. So this information, though, what's most interesting, gets populated into the other document provided, which is the ratios and surplus calculation. Uh, our accountants are, are, they're, they're experts in school and nonprofit organizations, and they provide this to us every year. Um, what this does is this compares various ratios that are used to determine the financial stability of the school, and they compare that against other schools that they audit, as well as an average of, uh, all the institutions that they look at. And what they've given us is several specific examples. And the first two columns are AMSA data this year and last year. And then the next columns, the next four columns are individual schools. And the last column is an averaging of all the schools that they work in. So it's, it's really wonderful. And they've tried to pick the most similar schools that they can. Column, uh, the third column, School A, is really the most similar in size and with respect to AMSA. So as we compare the school's, um, performance, I just wanna go through some of the ratios. Uh, the current ratio is a measure of the, of the liquidity of the business, and it's the not, the assets over the liabilities. And you can see AMSA has a very strong ratio of five point five six. And a large number here is good, uh, as opposed to a small number. And if you look at School A, you can see we're pretty well-aligned. We have a good number of assets, and it's very consistent to last year, to our liabilities. Um, if you look at some of the other schools, like School B, uh, they're much more close to a one-for-one. School C is a little bit stronger. School D is a little bit stronger. And on average, we're still above the average. Um, this is, uh, really interesting to note. The auditors like to tell us that for the number of years that AMSA has been in business since 2005, to have this strong ratio is good business management by the school. If you look at School, uh, D, or even, uh, School A, you can see that they've been in business, uh, for quite a few years, uh, more, ten years more than AMSA, and yet we're still in the same financial position as they are, for about the same size school. The second, uh, ratio is the debt-to-equity ratio, and this measures your liabilities to that net position number that we talked about, which is a key financial metric. Um, AMSA doesn't have very many liabilities. A loan number here is a good number, but, um, if you look at School B, for example, twenty-two, um, they have a, a loan or a debt or mortgage, as does C, that's driving their ratio in another direction. Obviously, we don't have that. Um, that may change as we move forward, but we do have a strong net position, which will help leverage that next, uh, stage in the school's lifespan. The third ratio, composition of earnings, this measures how much of the revenue and cash flow into the school comes from tuition versus other types of funding. So AMSA is ninety-three percent really dependent upon tuition, uh, for the school. That's a slightly higher number than last year, and that's predominantly due to, again, the COVID situation that we encountered in the spring, when, uh, some of the extra funding that we would have had from student programs was reduced. But you can see that generally, ninety-three percent is very common. Some of the other schools that have, um, a lower ratio of tuition to total net revenue are, uh, receiving significantly more grant money for the most part, or outside, uh, no, uh, funding. So it's better to have a little bit less in your tuition ratio, but this is by no means a challenge for the school. Uh, the next one is operating expenses. This is a comparison, uh, across the different schools of where the schools spend their funds. Uh, and the top spending item that AMSA and frankly, all the other schools have, uh, is in the area of its personnel and, um, and related costs, which is what you would expect for a school. Uh, secondly, occupancy, uh, followed by student costs, um, and then some small numbers there. But predominantly, the number one is the personnel. I'd also like to point out that AMSA spends seventy-two point seven percent up this year a little bit. Uh, again, that ratio was a little bit skewed this year, as it is, uh, for seven, several of the others, but sixty-nine versus an average of all schools of, of sixty-six, uh, sixty-six. Some of the others in Marshall Arbor School, they have a little bit more spreading of their costs, but it's, it's still right in line, if not above the other averaging of the schools, which is very good. Um, the next item here, and if anyone has any questions along the way, uh, some, Roger, please speak up, because I'm not looking at the total of all the, of all the hands. I'm really only seeing my screen and four of you. Um, the next ratio is really looking at the, um, number of, this is more or less factual data. Um, occupancy cost per square foot is pretty key. Um, this relates to the lease costs and whatnot versus the total, uh, square feet. And you can see we're, we're pretty average. It varies quite a bit. Um, and then the personnel costs to the number of employees, uh, we're, we're also right in the middle there as well, on a little bit on the high side. From an expense perspective, the number of months operating, um, this is the reserve number. This is also a pretty important metric for the school. Uh, it's also important for DICE. They wanna understand the amount of capital available to support the school in, in terms of months. So they look at your total income, they look at your total monthly operating expenses and your net, uh, unrestricted operating position. And they say, in general, AMSA has five point six months worth of cash flow, uh, to manage the business if anything were to go awry with state funding. Uh, and you can see, last year we were at four point four. Um, this is a very good, strong number. The recommendation is between three and six months. So we're, we're in the middle to the high end. Uh, but again, that's a good stability number, uh, and it provides us opportunity to make investments if necessary, when those things might come up, as they are right now, with the need to improve, uh, for example, the technology of the school with respect to COVID. So, um, I'm not gonna get into this one. This is another complex calculation. Uh, it should be known that a negative is a good guy. We have a lot of question here, so, um, they like to tell us it's good. I think I missed the first. Here we go. On the first page, um, this is a summary of all the ratios that the auditors look at, and as he told us, uh, on Tuesday, you're all green, you're all good, and we're way above and not in risk of any issues associated with these ratios. So I don't wanna get into them, because I've spent a lot of time already. Um, but the audit report has been, uh, excellent this year and last year while I was here, and, uh, it's been, you know, great to have, uh, Leanna and Ellen here to help make sure that that's the case. So with that, I will, uh, take any questions on the report, and then we're gonna vote on accepting the audit report, so that we can lock this down. Any questions?
Well, Sheila, thank you. That was a very clear walkthrough. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Uh, feel free to take a look online if you have any questions after the fact. Uh, go ahead and email me or Leanna. I'm sure we'd be happy to answer any questions later too. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer to absorb this kind of data.
Kristen, I, I don't know if this is a fair question to you, but, but, uh, if I remember correctly, one of the schools, so when we did this last year, we had a similar comparison with anonymous schools. And one of them that have one of those, um, that ratios high was because they had taken on a loan for building-related purposes. I'm assuming it's the same school that has that same ratio. So whatever it was, Kool-Aid last year, it was Kool-Aid this year. So. So I, I don't know if you know the answer to that, but I guess it's safe to assume that if, you know, if we make an investment in facilities, it could look similar. So I, I think we're in a good position to, then I guess I'm just trying to make that comparison.
Um, yes, yes, yes. Um, actually, one of the schools, I think, was School B this year. Uh, Dave had indicated that it was a new loan that they were, uh, pulling in. So School C, however, definitely has been, uh, around and had a, a much larger facility, uh, with a large amount of debt, but also had been in business for a really long time. So the net position was, was pretty strong, because, um, it was more of a one-for-one situation as opposed to School B, which is, um, you know, twenty-two, uh, has a, a ratio of twenty-two, which is, which is extremely high. Uh, but I think that's because it's new and they may not have finalized all of the transactions associated with their building. And Dave didn't get into much more detail with that than us. Thanks for your question. Anyone else?
Other questions for Kristen or Leanna?
Again, kudos to Leanna for, for making this a success. And point, I'd like to point out, her being so prepared, that to turn around time on this was also very, very good. Her preparation was stellar in order to make that happen. So thank you.
Alright, I'll take a motion to approve the, the audit.
Motion to approve the audit.
Motion from Jill?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Second from Ben. Raul?
You say Raul or Raul?
Raul.
Yes.
Your call, starting with Raul. Uh, Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Samini?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again to, uh, Leanna and Kristen and Ellen and everybody to, for making this happen. I love clean audits. Alright, I believe we are done with the, uh, the vote section of the meeting, unless I have missed something. Alright. So Ellen, are you ready? Ellen, are you ready for an executive director report? Or would you like a minute break?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm.
No, I'm ready to go.
All right. Rock and roll. All the floor is yours.
Setting up here, thank you. All right, well, it's been quite a night, everyone. Glad to have you all here. All right, so we're going to just switch gears completely into our ED report for the month. And to start out first with a few thank yous, then we're going to talk about enrollment and attrition updates, so our numbers. Typically, in October, we talk about MCAS. Just a reminder, we didn't have MCAS last spring, so we don't have that data. So we're going to be focusing on the enrollment and the attrition. We also have conducted a couple surveys since the last time we met. We have a Week Five staff survey, some summary results from that. We asked additional questions, too, some more detailed information. I'm trying to keep it consistent, what we share with you, so you can kind of watch it. The numbers change over time, I'll show you that, and our student survey from Week Three, and we have a little bit of razzle-dazzle time. So first, I want to, once again, just tell our teachers how much I appreciate them, and I really do believe in us as a community. All of these things that we go through each day, and in each situation, in COVID and all, really does make us stronger in the end. So I want to thank all of our teachers and counselors, because they give 110% of themselves, of their passion, their knowledge, every single day to our kids and to each other, honestly, as they help each other to navigate this new situation. Also want to thank our students for striving for excellence each day, for not giving up, for supporting their teachers, because, you know, they're giving feedback to the teachers that's so important to them, and for working so hard. The attendance really has been very good. The kids are involved, and they're getting their work done, and under very difficult circumstances, and this is a new situation that they're navigating as well. Also want to thank my administrative team and the non-teaching staff for keeping everything running so smoothly in the background. Really, it feels seamless to me. They've done such a great job. They're all such independent workers, which has really paid off in this situation. So thank you to Sarah and all, my whole team, Leanna, and Virginia, and Linda, and everyone else. They've just been super. And then also to our families for their continued support, and for making remote learning a priority in their homes. They have really done a fantastic job, and I do understand how difficult it is. We're going to look at those enrollment and attrition update first. So student enrollment, I had to throw a picture of, that's my grandson. I had to throw a picture of him. He's just about to turn two, and he's super cute. And that's Henry. But anyway, nice fall photo, and just to show you that our charter states that we will have 966 students. That's been a real struggle for AMSA over many years, and that was one of the things when Anders and I came into our positions, that we really needed to get under control. And so we've been able to do that, and just want to show you for the second year in a row, that we are at 966, which is exactly where we're supposed to be, along with that cute little face. Okay. So here's our enrollment by grade this year. You know, seniors graduate and bring a new class in, but you can see that we're balancing things. And Linda and I have been working on shifting numbers to, actually, we want to increase the numbers in our middle school, but it has to be done very slowly over time as students graduate. So you can see that in our middle school, we're at 127, 125, 125. This is all very important, when we start talking about scheduling and how many sections we're offering, and there is a delicate balance here. Our ninth grade has 147. Our big class, which is the 10th grade, has 155, 147 for 11th, and 141 for our 12th graders. So it's shifting. If you had looked at this from four years ago, the numbers would have been up and down and all over the place, and so we're really trying to level it out, and we've had some success. So I thank Linda Edwards for all of her hard work. There's a couple interesting things. I'm going to show you, obviously, this little pie chart here, but there's, the next slide I thought was very interesting. And what jumps out to me here is, you'll see that the darker blue color is the Marlboro, and it's about, it's at 50% now, just about. Hudson is at 174, Clinton 85, Maynard 66, and then other, that's outside the core towns, is 157. The visual here, just to show you how it's broken up, but actually, what I think is interesting is, if you look at this slide here, what you're going to see is that things have really shifted in Marlboro, and that has caused shifts in our other core towns. Now, I have a little asterisk there next to 2019 and 20. This was the year that Marlboro had gone down into the bottom 10% of the state for their MCAS scores from the prior two years, and we were able to open it up to Marlboro students again. Now, if we hadn't been able to do that in 2019 and 20, we probably would be much lower than 484 this year. So in 2018-19, we were at net CAT spending. We could not take Marlboro students in. All of a sudden, in 1920, they said, you can. So the seniors graduated, we pulled in quite a few, and we kept a pretty level at 542. Now, this year, this past year, once again, we were not able to take Marlboro students in, and now it's dipped way down to 484. That may have an impact this winter, when we hear from the state whether we can pull from Marlboro again, because that number is probably low enough that it may give us some hope for the future. But we won't know until the state tells us in February if we're going to be able to open up some more Marlboro seats. It might be limited, but we're going to have to wait and see. But now, what has happened, then, because our Marlboro numbers are down, our Hudson numbers are way up, right? They jumped from 129 to 174. Clinton is up 70 to 85, and Maynard is 52 to 66. Also brought down our numbers a little bit from the students that we took in from other districts. And a lot of that has to do with how many kids apply from each one of our core towns as well. So I thought that that was interesting. It's a shift in our student body that I don't, I could go back and look at how many years ago, our Marlboro numbers were that low, but my guess is it's probably been some time. Remembering that we always take siblings in, and we had fewer siblings. Linda told me we had 20 fewer siblings this year. And just, you know, babies are born, and then they grow up and families move on and that, but I thought that was interesting. So this is the attrition. These are, I presented attrition numbers to you in, I believe it was in June. These are the students who left over the summer. So this was from the last day of school until the first day of school, how many students we lost over the summer. And you can see, so the class of 2020, that was our graduating class, they all, obviously, they all graduated. And then the 11th graders, who are now our 12th graders, we just lost one. They returned to their ascending district. The current 11th graders, we lost six, and that was five to Mass Academy, and one left to a private school. And then the next grade down, we lost four, two to returning district, one moved within the state, and one went to a private. So that's how, just basically, how that works. We lost 20, so we lost 27 students over the summer. Last year, I compared, we lost 49. So that's down quite a bit. I think some of that might be COVID, and maybe people were insecure about making a change, or maybe it's just good news, and people decided that they wanted to stay. We're happy to, we're happy to have them and glad that they stayed with us. Also, I've added 10 minutes on at the end for questions, so I can jump back to questions at the end, so just trying to fly through the slides. This is our waitlist. This is who we have sitting on the waitlist right now. You can see, there's a number of Marlboro students there, but for this year, they are ineligible. We can't pull them, so they'd have to be skipped if any other seats open up. We do have to backfill seats up until March 15th, but we're obviously not close to that yet, and those are the numbers of applications we have sitting on our waiting list right now. And now we're going to look at some of our surveys. This is a staff survey. This is very recent. This was, I believe, Mike put this out last Thursday or Friday, I think it was last Thursday night. And this is a similar question that we asked the first survey that I showed you after Week One. Overall, how would you rate your first few weeks of school? And that is with one being unbearable and five being fantastic. We had, those were my words, I just thinking of ways to really express it.
Ellen, this is students?
This, no, this is teachers.
Teachers, good.
This is staff. This, and it's all staff, right? It's not just the teachers, this is everyone. And you can see where our percentages are. I also added on the first survey, just so that you could see that there was a slight shift to the four category, to the four rating. And so according to this, it really was very similar. I think the numbers from the original survey, it was 96.1 or 96.2, had said they had a fantastic to good week. We're up to 96.4, so still very positive. And I think that, especially with how exhaustion can really settle in after week after week after week, I was actually thrilled to see these, to see these numbers, that they're still having a good experience. So I really believe that optimism helps drive us to get up every morning, and so, you know, I want to keep this question each time we do this. How optimistic do you feel about the weeks ahead, with one being not at all and five meaning very optimistic? Once again, we're up a little bit, again, into that number four category. Do, 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 minute, where are we? I guess overall, yeah, more up into the number three. We were 97%. It was 96.1% before, now it's 97.6, rated a five, a four, or a three. So once again, feel pretty good about that. The numbers shifted for sure, but it's still, it's still very positive. So the other thing that we're really interested in hearing, because I am concerned about burnout and how folks are feeling at home and how much work they have, being, switching this teaching model over to a remote is extremely time-consuming. The teachers spend a tremendous amount of time prepping these lessons and putting in NearPod and quizzes and things like that to convert everything over to online, and I wanted to kind of gauge, you know, how it compared to years past. And 62% of them said that they are, they are spending more time. That less time, that little slice of red right there, was three respondents. Obviously, the green, that would be the office, the office folks, and about 14 and a half were, felt that they were about the same time. You know, this doesn't break it down further into, well, how many hours did you spend before? But I think it is telling that 62% are spending more time prepping. And I think, I think that goes to show, I think you can talk to any teacher that you know, inside or outside of AMSA, and they will tell you that they're putting a tremendous amount of work into, not only prepping, but grading, and everything just seems to take more time online. So now, this is the student survey results, and this was from Week Three. So we had, I believe it was like 570, 524 respondents, and we asked them the same basic question, overall, how would you rate your first three weeks? And 82.5% said they had a fantastic to good week, rating them from five to three. 14.7% said they had a not-a-great-week, fair, maybe, and 2.9% said that they didn't have a good experience, which we want all our students to have a great experience. So we're going to, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to work on this and to try to engage them as best as we can, each and every one of them, and try to get those numbers up. We asked how their Zoom experience has been, and that was a little bit higher. 87.5% said that it was fantastic to good during the first three weeks. I think that we've been surprised that Zoom has worked out in ways that we didn't quite expect. I was, had an opportunity to talk to about a dozen teachers after our staff meeting yesterday, and they were, they were all telling, you know, funny stories about things with kids and things that have gone right and things that have gone wrong, and they assured me that they were able to connect with kids through this platform. And I think that was one of the greatest concerns that teachers had. Was I going to get to know their names? Was I going to get to kind of know who they are? And they felt that they were, and that it was working. And it seems as though, you know, 87% of the kids said, you know, this is, this seems to be working out okay, with, you know, the threes and fours obviously being the biggest number. We also wanted to know, were they having difficulty accessing their classes through Zoom? And 91% said no, they're not having any issues. 9% said they are. Obviously, we're going to keep working on this. I did talk to Erica about this, and she said that Zoom seems to be updating itself or putting an update out about every two weeks. And what ends up happening sometimes is, if people have started updating, but not everyone has updated, it can bounce people out a little bit. So there are some Zoom issues, but really, overall, 91% say that they're having, you know, they're not having a problem getting in. I think that's pretty remarkable. We've had some bad weather lately, too, and that's, you know, knocked out some internet and electricity in some of our people's homes. So, and then we wanted to ask them how many hours per night of homework. We did, some of our upperclassmen said, what do you mean? Only, you're ending at three or more. You know, we want to say that we had five or six, or, they thought that we should have had the brackets a little bit higher there. But now, what's not great about this question, and Brianna has found a way to break it out by grade, so that the teachers are actually going to get this report by grade, and she's worked, she was working on that today. So they're going to, if the sixth-grade teachers are going to be able to pull out the sixth-grade data, and the 11th-grade teachers will be able to pull up 11th grade. This is sixth through 12th. So you're not going to expect your sixth graders to be, you know, to be working as much time as an 11th or 12th graders with AP and whatnot. So this, I think this, what this shows really is that, if you look back at the beginning, and I didn't do that, is that it was a pretty even distribution of who participated in the survey. And, you know, we know some of our kids are getting a lot, a lot of homework, and some of them, not as much, especially the younger ones. Asked how optimistic they feel about the weeks ahead, 72.1%, so not quite as optimistic as their very optimistic teachers, but still 72% think that they are very to somewhat optimistic about the weeks ahead. Hopefully, we'll continue to let them know that there's stability here, that there's things that they can count on, new and exciting ways to do assessments and to make these classes more enjoyable. So we're going to continue to work on that number, but that's a great baseline number from them to work from. So some of the, we also had a text box on the student surveys, and some of the concerns and suggestions that they had. Love to hear, especially when they make suggestions, because sometimes we need to hear what they are seeing from their perspective. They're concerned about how the academic workshops are being used. We've had lots of conversations to a point, I think if Mike Noraki hears the word academic workshop one more time, he's going to, he's going to lose it. But it's a big topic, because people are using it in different ways, and we did ask teachers how they are using those academic workshops, and the kids are feeling like they're getting an awful lot of work, and they do want to use those academic workshops as they were designed, which is for them to work on classwork for the current class they're in, or for, you know, more like a study if they, if they don't have classwork for that particular class. You know, some teachers are overflowing into it a little bit, or sometimes a lot of it, and so we're trying to talk, you know, talk to them about that and how they're using that time. There's, it's, you know, our teachers are very concerned about making sure that the kids are getting the content that they need, and that's great. We want that, but, you know, they also need a break as well. And there's always concern from our kids about the amount of homework. Once again, it's a shortened school year, there aren't as many hours of direct instruction as we Um, there aren't as many hours uh of direct instruction as we, we usually have. And so the work is, is, has increased and um for some of our students, and I think that they're feeling that. Uh, but there is an awful lot of content, especially for AP teachers. And if we have to run MCAS this year, there's, there's standards that need to be taught. We can't get away from it. Um, so you know, they need to just keep working, working hard. And uh, we need to be sensitive when they need breaks to, they mentioned screen time, they want stretch breaks. And we've talked about that as well. All the teachers are also gonna get all the comments. Um, from, from the students too, and we've, we've scrubbed those for them. And um, they also suggested that um teachers potentially run individual class surveys. I thought that was an interesting thing, just anonymous. Um, just to ask, the teachers to ask them, how are things going? Um, you know, is the homework amount enough? And, and um, do you feel challenged and things like that? So um, I think that's a, that's a great idea. And that doesn't have to be anything that administration um is involved with. Um, just good feedback for themselves. A little bit of razzle dazzle time. And just wanna show everyone that um our clubs are up and running. I know UNICEF is up and moving, but uh there is Ms. Bowen running uh her high school quiz show. And um, that's her team playing against another team there. And uh Leaders For Tomorrow is up and running, Amso's speech. Most of our clubs now that if we think we can run them online, we are. And so um, any of the, our kids or parents that are out there listening, uh, please encourage your, your students to go um onto the website and look at that list of clubs and uh, and join a club. And also, if you've been by Amso recently, you'll see that we had an eagle on one of our eleventh grade um students who's in, who's, this was his eagle project. Um, and you can see that he uh built with a team of people, volunteers, built those benches. You can see all our receptions. There's Sandy, Kathy, and Margie there trying out those benches. Along with those potted um little bushes and he seeded that whole area and put in um loom and they did just a beautiful job. So uh, we thank um, we said, thanks Sarah. Um, and um for, it looks beautiful. It, it's, it's um, yeah, drive through. It's, it looks super. And just a couple of our sibling shots. These are um, I thought these, this was adorable. Look at the little, the little fuzzy dog down on the bottom there. But um, just, just a couple of pictures of the kind of setup some of our, our kids have. Um, and, and how they've been feeling, has been dealing with siblings. Um, Warren knows all about that and, and so does Ben. Um, and how do you set up something for siblings? Um, it's, it's tough. I, I know I've heard some students say that it's hard. They can hear their, their, their sibling, their sister doing classes right through the wall, you know, it's, it, it's not easy, but um everyone's trying to make the best out of it. I wanted to end with two quotes tonight. Um, and, and the first is, is from um, a, a new hero of mine, and that is Maya Angelou. And the quote reads, "We all should know that diversity makes for a rich tapestry. And we must understand that all the threads of the tapestry are equal in value, no matter what their color." And so grateful for, for her and uh for all the things that, that she has taught me uh through her writing and through her videos um uh in, in the last six, six or eight months. And then the, the last one too, which really resonated with me. Um, this is Cheryl Sandberg. She's the C, COO of um Facebook. And she said, "We cannot change what we are not aware of. And once we are aware, we cannot help but change." And she's speaking um, I think in particular about empowering women, but this um certainly resonated personally with me when we talk about um a racism. And that um, even though I, I uh, some of you may know, some of you may not know that I have a uh, a Hispanic daughter. She, we adopted her from Guatemala when she was just eight months old. And uh, she's twenty-two now. And I, I walked side by side with her. She was growing up. And experienced racism um through her, through her eyes and through what happened in her experiences. And yet I didn't understand it. Um, and I, I didn't really understand it until recent years. And once I did understand, and once I heard the pain of some of our students, once I came to Amso. It did change me. It changed my heart. And it made me realize that there's been some terrible wrongs, systematic wrongs and oppression of people in our country, especially our, our black brothers and sisters. And, and I can no longer um stand, stand by and, and let that happen, not, not to our kids, not to anyone. Um, and so I, I close with, with her thoughts there. And open it up for questions. I'm happy to look at any of those numbers. They're very basic, the, the attrition and the enrollment numbers. But if you have any questions about anything, happy to.
Yeah, I have a question. So it is on the uh student waitlist, actually. Um, if you could go back to that slide, that would be great. Thanks for them all, of course. Um, you know, as we're looking at, yeah, as we're looking at the core town list, especially in those early grades, right, which is where you wanna increase the numbers. Um, how do we go about getting an expansion there? I mean, even you know, I, I mean, the Hudson, Hudson numbers went up significantly, so I don't know if the waitlist carries over. Maybe most of those kids got in. No, they don't carry over.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll jump back and explain it to you. So this list had oh, eight hundred kids on it last January. So all of the kids who were brought in, that's where the zeros come in. That means those kids have already been pulled off, off, off the waitlist and are already enrolled.
Okay.
So I, I'm sorry, this is the old waitlist. Actually, our new application is opening up on the thirtieth of October. It will be opened up until the middle of January. And that's gonna re-feed this list. Chris, this, this list goes gone, is gone.
Okay, got it.
A new list, yeah, comes in.
Got it, got it.
I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that.
No, no, that's good. That's good to know, because it, it answers the question that a lot of those, you know, kids came off the list primarily because Marlboro is uh stopped. But and then the, the follow-up question, I think that this is true, is that you take all core town and first before you go into non-core town?
Yes, siblings first and then, and then core towns, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, we're very um, Linda's been working, they've changed over our whole um system on Reddicker. She's been through a lot of training and they're changing over, getting that application up and ready. I was talking to her today. We'll be ready to, to launch next week. And Mike, and uh they've been working on a remote um, uh, remote. Um, we used to go to the different towns and do like a little roadshow. And they're doing one now. Um, that's gonna be recorded and presented live, like a family forum. Jess, did you have your hand up?
Oh, no, with Liz, I was about to say.
Oh, she did too.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I can't, I only see four people. I didn't see Jess. Uh, no, I just wanted to make this statement that um although the non-core towns aren't taken, they can be taken as part of the sibling group. So it is important to note that there is still a big population of non-core towns at Amso, because they came in via siblings. So I just wanted to make that clarification, that's all.
Yeah, the siblings come off first. They just, they just, they're on the very, very top of the list, no matter what town they're from. Mm-hmm. And then if we had, let's say we had a um seventh grade seat that opened up. Um, all, obviously the siblings are all gone and the core town is all gone. Uh, we'd have to skip the Marlboro. And we would then uh stop pulling from, or make, you know, offering the seat to the non-core town person. Because we still have to backfill right up until the, the early spring. Jess, did you um?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I, I don't know why the spacebar sometimes unmutes me and sometimes it doesn't. Eh, um, the enrollment numbers, is the, the tenth grade is our big class? Is that what I saw?
Yes.
Can you confirm? I think this is true. Is the tenth grade the like sine wave of the bubble class we had? That was, that's twenty sixteen, right?
Yeah, that was twenty sixteen.
They left, is that that sixth grade?
It, 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 I, I'd need Linda to tell me exactly, but how many years ago was that, Jess? So they would have been one, two, three, four. That'd been four years ago. You, you know, it could have been.
Um, because I know one of, one of our concerns with that bubble class was not just that it was that one year problem, but that that problem would then, once we leave those kids, and then we have another bubble when they, and, and so it, those numbers look really nice, because although it's still a little bit higher, they really have flattened out. So I think that that's a, it's really nice. And it's worth kind of pointing out what a, what a problem that bubble class was in terms of, of asset relocation. Every time they came through, we needed more textbooks. Do you know what I mean? Like it, it caused a lot of ripple problems. So minimizing that is, is, is really, that, that was nice to see.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that, there were a lot of thought went into that. Linda's done a great job. Um, one of the things is that, that tenth grade class would actually be smaller now. But we had some scheduling issues with sixth grade last year, which we wanted to add them to sixth grade, but we didn't have the seats. It, because that's, you know how that's all driven by math level, right? And so we had to pop some into ninth grade, although that, that would have probably been about five, at least five less.
But, but still, the, the twenty sixteen graduation class had one eighty. It was still not, like, you know, it's still not at that level. So we still have some buffer. Not that we want to have some more students right now, but still it's a good number.
Yeah, we're at the nine sixty-six. So we're right exactly um where we, where we need to be. Any other thoughts or questions?
Yep, um, just a couple of just kudos, uh, really kudos to the club advisors, the teachers who are club advisors, who've got the clubs up and running. That's awesome. Uh, I know uh how important that is to the students and especially their well-being as they go through this, you know, having other sort of uh, uh, activities that they can pursue along with their academics. Um, and Eagle Scout Project, that's great to see. I saw it on Facebook. Thank you for publicizing and giving visibility to that kind of work. Um, I wanna turn my attention a little bit to the teacher survey. And wondering if there's any information we can glean from the teachers. Um, particularly where they're saying that they're spending more time prep, uh, prepping. And just how can we support uh if there's any, if there's any more granularity to that sixty-one percent and where they're spending their time? And whether we can sort of learn from that, that there might be some themes that the school or the board or any of us can support most of the teachers better, so we can bring down some of those numbers. Uh, just so that the teachers are feeling like as if they're spending their time uh in very productive places where they, they want to, you know, support their students. Um, and along with that, um, is there a place where, we also wanna ask teachers, uh, I've seen this at work certainly, where we've transitioned more to online work. We're actually seeing silver linings in that as well. We're learning on how to uh, work with each other online and want to take some of those ideas when we go back into the office. And whether uh there's things that teachers find, oh, this is actually working better in uh, in this new way. And I'd like to bring that uh sort of learning back uh when we do go back. Uh, so both of those, and whether we can pursue some of that uh as we go forward and as we uh, you know, find uh look for opportunities to learn from this experience, so we're stronger coming out at the end of it.
Absolutely.
Do you mind if I address that as a teacher?
Pardon me?
Would you mind if I address that as one of the teachers and question?
Absolutely.
So the um, the prep time question was, and there was an extra slide that you guys shared with us at the faculty meeting about the Monday flex day. And I just kind of wanted to say that as a, like me personally, and I've talked to other people, that we are spending a lot more time prepping. But that that, we kind of knew going in that it was going to require more prepping and that the flex Monday is meant, was a way to ameliorate that. And for a lot of us, that has been super helpful. Um, one of the questions was like, are, what if we move, what, because also we're missing classroom hours, would we wanna give up that flex day to have more classroom time? It was like overwhelming that teachers, the extra prep time is being done on that Monday and we desperately need it. So I really wanna throw a shout out to the support of the admin team for recognizing we needed that more prep time, that they have given us that more prep time. And that there, there is a way that we have been dealing with that. And also just in casual talking with my friends, a lot of people have mentioned to me that it feels like a nicer work-home balance. I think, you know, we have lesser commutes. You can shower during your prep time. You can um, you know, you can go to lunch and just, you know, it's, so a lot of those little things are, they're little, we didn't really think about them, but um, you know, when you're done at two forty-five, you, you can be done and be with your kids and family. So there are some upsides. I mean, there's no doubt, there's a lot of things that are harder, but some of those times about prep time, the flex time, the personal time, I, I think I think we were worried about it. And I think a lot of people are feeling um nice, that it's nice. As a matter of fact, I'm kind of like, why don't teachers always have Mondays to prep for their week ahead? Um, because we're kind of expected to prep in grade and do all of those things outside of school time. And so having the recognition that we need hours to get that done is, is really nice.
Right, and I was gonna also suggest, Mike, that you take a little note on that and we can uh, we can ask a follow-up question next time to break down where, where folks um are spending their time and if there's um additional ways that we can support them and reduce even that.
Can I say something too?
Please, Padmaja, go ahead.
Again, I wanna second what Jess has said. The administrative team has been very, very supportive of providing all the opportunities for us to catch up with, like, you know, for the prepping of it. They have thought about most of the things. But I also want to thank so many for thinking about the teachers and, and bringing it up. What can we do to, just to even offer that help? It means a lot to the community, first of all. Um, yeah, it does mean a lot. Um, the thing about the tools though, like, you know, we, all the teachers are like, you know, it was so overwhelming at the beginning when we had NearPod, when we had Google Classroom, we had Zoom, like, no, Tencent, uh, like five or six different things. But like, right now, people are kind of mastering how to use Zoom. I think they, they kind mastering might be too far, because Zoom keeps updating every two weeks. Something or the other pops up. But still, teachers are keeping up with it, like, you know, they're learning as they go and they are, they're, they're kind of ready, you, ready to use the Google Classroom. They're using it well. Now they want to use other tools. Anything that worked well. They, I, I think they are still like, you know, at a, at a point where which one can I use? They are still testing things out. But I see your point and trying to uh use them in future years too, like, you know, what can we keep? And what can we not keep? Like, no, Liz was talking about this in the ad committee meeting la, last time, and we, we did have a discussion about it. What is worth keeping? Like, you know, if majority of the people are, are using it, we can probably think and as in, that we can discuss with the administration and we can ask for it. And I'm pretty sure they are very, very open up, like, you know, open-minded and they are helping us out a lot. And that's what I wanted to say. It's, it's so great to hear. Like, you know, think of the possibilities that what needs to be done. That's one of the biggest positive steps that came out of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Padmaja. Appreciate both of you. Um, any other questions or, whoops, or um information? No, we're good. Okay. Thank you all very, very much for, for everything tonight, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Great report. Uh, and great, great look. Uh, nice to see that the attrition, attrition rate is well under control. If anything, I think probably better than previous years. As far as percent, percent loss. Shows the value of Amso. Um, next up. See, uh, parent. Laura, you have the table. Floor, something like that.
Green, whatever.
Chair.
Um, there's actually not a whole heck of a lot to report. Um, I did have a couple of conversations just from parents who have reached out about how are we gonna make decisions? When are we going? You're in a sort of the crystal ball. When are we going back? What are these kids doing? How's everyone's mental health? Like, do we, do we have answers, right, on what does mental health look like for these kids, remote versus in-person? And, and kind of all of these different factors that you know, I assure them, we look at kind of all those things. We also kind of look at what the state tells us we have to do. Um, and so just, just kind of continuing to have those kind of open conversations. Um, questions still about like, what about the HVAC? Um, HVAC is very, everybody's very excited about HVAC. Um, and then also um there was mention, I did speak with Bella Gorman yesterday, and the PTO does, you know, she kind of brought up and said this is, you know, potentially helpful is we still have that little pool of money in the PTO that we've kind of earmarked for school and infrastructure and to help out. So just don't forget about that. And I know they were gonna reach out to somebody else somewhere on the screen um as well about that. So um, all in all, I think on the parent side of things, everyone's doing what they need to do and kind of making sure that kids are set up to succeed on our end. And I think there is an, an acknowledgement that it's not easy on the school's side either. Um, as, as hard as it is, and it's very hard to not compare. Um, but you know, one of the things that I've, I've said, and it's a personal opinion, it's not, I don't, I haven't done the research to back it up, but I really believe that kids, whether they're in-person or virtual this year, are are not able to absorb the the content the way they would in a normal year. Because even if they're sitting in school, that we're in the middle of a crazy time in history, right? And so there's all these other things that are taking up their brain power. And so I think we're lucky regardless of what situation we're in. I mean, everyone's worrying about who's wearing a mask and how close am I and did I see too many people? And what is this allergies or a cold or, you know, like it? The kids are going through the same things I think we are as adults. And so those are just the conversations that parents are having right now. Um, so nothing that's earth shattering. I think everything will be discussed here and and we'll be able to share with parents. And obviously, if they do have comments, questions, concerns, reach out to me and get them answered.
It's I can give you a little bit of information there. Um, I met with Raoul and and Roger a little bit earlier before the board meeting. We're we're going to, um, you know, we had new data that came in today. Um, Marlboro Hudson and Clinton are are all red. Um, Marlboro has been red now five weeks in a row. Um, Hudson, I believe, three weeks and now Clinton, um, it's a week or two. And um, we're gonna watch that. We have one more set of data coming out next week as well. And um, the numbers, the state and it state itself is um is the 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 positive rate is 5.7 in the state and almost 1,000 new cases today. So that that's concerning data coming in. Um, we're going to um make a a final decision uh by November 2nd. And we'll have a family forum on November 4th, um, so families can come and talk to us. Um, but um, that's where we are right now. We're um not happy to see the trend of of the data for sure. Um, but we're going to uh to see what next week brings as well. And um, as far as the HVAC system is concerned, the study has been done. We're waiting for reports. We know that there's issues throughout all three buildings. Um, in fact, it may be that the lower school building is in better shape than the other two, we're being told. Um, is actually damper issues um in the the upper school building. That's the the flap that goes up and down and they they're run mechanically. Um, Eric and Sean are are working on all of that. But then what what happens is then they come back through again and make sure that mechanically things are working. Um, then there's another company that comes in that gets all the air flowing and then someone else actually comes in and and balances it. Um, so it's going to take quite some time actually to work through that process because it's not just one company. So we're waiting for the report and then there's about three steps Eric tells me after that until we actually have them come in and say, yes, the flow is right in this room, the flow is right in this room and in this office. And they'll go through each room and make sure that it's it's running um properly. It is not running properly right now in any of the three buildings. We don't have the details of exactly what that is or what it the numbers are because we're still waiting for that in the report.
Thank you.
Questions for Laura? Jess, you have the floor.
Hey, everyone. Um, Ellen shared the results of the most recent faculty survey. So um, that kind of is helpful for my report because I she did all my work for me. Um, so I think that from the feedback I'm hearing, that is very representative and um a really so sort of solid picture of how teachers are generally feeling right now. Um, so I'll share a few things. Teachers remain concerned about um returning to in person instruction and that sort of uncertainty around that, like Laura said, when will it happen? When will we know? What? How will we know? What what are the factors? Um, that uncertainty remains sort of a challenge for us. I think most of us recognize that a lot of these factors are out of our hands. So um, that there's just always when you're, when you don't have a situation that you're you're like in control of, that's always a little unsettling. But generally speaking, teachers have expressed how much they appreciate that we are continuing to teach remotely and safely. And I I think that that is um a a widespread sentiment. Um, I do want to share a little bit of direct feedback I have received from teachers. Um, all day Zooms, this is, I'm reading some exact quotes. All day Zooms are exhausting. I am spending more time than usual giving individual feedback on every homework assignment that I'm not even sure if students are taking the time to read. And I was working until eight PM every evening last week grading essays. But one senior told me last week, quote, "I wanted to let you know that in my whole entire high school career, I have never enjoyed writing an essay this much. Everything from the research to listening to Anna Tijo he who's songs and learning of more about Chilean culture excited me. That comment made all of the hours of grading worth it. Overall, the students have been engaged and are learning, and I absolutely think AMSA has made the right decisions given our current situation." Um, another teacher wrote that the support for teachers is great. I feel as though our administration is on point when it comes to aiding teachers and helping them feel comfortable. And I also thought the first several weeks have gone surprisingly well. But the vast majority of the feedback that I received was in relation to my faculty report at the September meeting. And so I do want to spend the majority of my time tonight um addressing this. First of all, um, I want to thank all of my colleagues who reached out to me, many of whom sent you those um emails and took the time to write to you and Mr. Montesian for speaking publicly. I know it's not easy to do. Um, and um, I I never want my role to feel like I'm a block from someone's voice to the board. I hope that I'm only um am a way to to funnel and to add to that. So um, I encourage all faculty members and staff members to um continue to reach to the board directly if that is the best way and to still continue to use me as a conduit if that is your most helpful way. Um, I will add to the many voices that have already been shared with you um that um most people who reached out to me were in support of the diversity training. I actually wrote some notes down. I'm gonna read because I don't want to get off track. Um, when I shared that criticism with you last month, I I tried to indicate that it was certainly not how I knew or thought the majority of the faculty felt. And if um, and as you've heard tonight and I heard this month, many, many faculty members enjoyed the training, found it valuable and are in support of it being part of our professional culture and training here at AMSA. And if I gave the impression that that criticism was the way many or most people felt, I apologize. Almost everyone who reached out to me was in support of the training. And yet, the dissenting opinion that I read does not represent just one person. I don't want us to have the sense that it's just a a single voice. I don't know at what point a minority voice, what number, does it matter if it's one person or three people or 10 people or 15 people? I don't know what is the critical tipping point. Um, but I do think that, um, and I appreciate those of you who have said that you are glad that dissenting opinions are shared. Um, and in fact, after that report was shared, as I said, most people came back and said, this is not how I felt at all. Oh, my goodness. Um, there were a few people who were like, I thought I was the only one. Thank you for sharing that criticism because I was feeling very isolated. Um, so the faculty has had a lo- many divides in my years on staff. Um, we've had a middle school versus the high school teachers. We're in different buildings. We're in different departments and it's this department and that department. We've had people put themselves into camp on whole child and academic excellence. We've had the people who supported the union and the people who didn't. We've sometimes divided on admin and teachers and now we're adding this to our list. And this breaks my heart. I would like us to not be as divided. I'm a human being and I know we don't all work and live in like perfect harmony and rainbows. The world is a really divisive place and there's a lot of, there's a lot of pain out there. And um, of course, our faculty is going to reflect the divisions that we have in society. We're a group of human beings. I'm not an angel, you know, sometimes I look around and I see what other people are doing and I get I get snippy and I get I get whiny and I complain and I'm like, this one doesn't, why does this one do that? Why does this one not do that? And I think that we all do that. We're human beings. Um, and we look and we see that somebody tackles something a way that is different than I would. They prioritize different things. And um, it's easy to get into a mindset where we look to find where we are different and where we are critical. And I'm sure that working ice isolated in our own little homes probably adds to that. Um, one of the messages I try to stress when I meet at the beginning of the year with our new hires and our mentors is that I really truly believe that there is more than one way to be a great teacher. There's not one mold. There's not one script. There's lots of ways to be a great teacher. And so I am issuing myself a challenge and I want to remind myself of that every day. There is more than one way to be a great teacher. There's more than one way to be a great teacher at AMSA. I'm not perfect. I forget and I I get snippy and I know I'm not the only one. So perhaps someone, some of you are listening to me and will join me. I know that we are all on the same team. And I want us to, I want, every time I think, oh, my God, that one, not again. I want myself to say, you know what, thou, you know what that person is super good at? That person is here every day at 6:00 AM. I'm not, right? For every annoying thing that somebody does or every something that somebody does that I think is not the way it should be handled, they're also doing something good and valuable. And I want us to try and look for those things more in each other. I I do not believe that anyone here does not have the best interest of all of our students at heart. I know because I have talked to them and I have listened to them. I know that people who are questioning critical race theory is not the same thing as being racist. I know they are not. I know that the differences that people are seeing is a difference of approach and not that people don't value equality and human dignity. I know that because I've talked to people and I've listened to them. And it is interesting to me that out of a workshop on diversity that we have seen ourselves segregate ourselves into camps further. And diversity of thought is just as valuable, if not more, in an academic institution as diversity of ethnicity, of race, of religion, of LGBT, of age, of gender, of family status. We all have something we bring to the table. That's the whole point of diversity. That's why it's great. I'm looking at something differently than you are. And all of us have had the experience of listening to someone share an idea that we never thought of before that is a different way to approach it. That is something that if you had heard in a different way, you would have disagreed with, but you have had your mind changed in some way by listening to someone else's ideas. And this is what we want of our students and it's what we want of ourselves. So I don't want my students to only be exposed to my viewpoint and I have to remember that they're leaving my little room and they're going to someone else's room and they're gonna get a different viewpoint. And whether they like that or not, that challenge is their brain. And that's when they say, huh, I didn't think about it like that. I disagree and here's why, or huh, I'm going to change the way I'm thinking about that. And both in both instances, they come out stronger because of that. And this is my final point about this. If we want to persuade people about our ideas and the way we see the our worldview and that this way is is better, come over to our side, then the only way we persuade them is if we were, we approach that person with humility, with respect and with the willingness to listen. And if we start with what we have in common. And here's what I really genuinely believe we have in common, and that is the mission of AMSA. I have talked to lots of people, people who disagree on lots of things. And I have never once met a teacher or talked to a teacher who doesn't think we're all in this to have children of all backgrounds and all abilities excel in all subjects. So I know that the message that sort of came out of that criticism might be counterintuitive to that. But I I know that that is not what that person was trying to say. It was a methodology and a process and an approach rather than that person was racist or that people who disagree or that there are faculty members here on staff who don't care about our students or who don't want students who are of all abilities and to excel in all areas. And I hope that I can leave not just the board, but my fellow colleagues, the whole community and all stakeholders um with that message. And because this is a heavy topic, I'm going to end and I hope I have a few minutes and somebody doesn't come in and tell me that my time is up. But I would like to share with you a slightly funny story about how teaching remotely has been somewhat normalized for me this week. One of the things that is, so pause, segue. One of the things that's been hard about cheating online is you don't have those like little human moments with your class that are just sort of in passing. And um, they, you know, that 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 sort of make up what is like great about being a teacher and being in that classroom. So I was running a class the other day and I have this little wipe off board behind me, a little white whiteboard. And I was, I was drawing a, I was drawing a Venn diagram actually about the powers of the federal government and the state and I kept turning back and I had little things that the Fed does and the state does and that are some things that they overlap. And the kids were giggling like mad. I know that, I don't know what they're doing, but they're texting each other. Something funny is happening. And finally, I said, what is happening? And apparently, here's the thing, we're all at home and there's a Zoom setting that gives you a little glow up that you can put a filter on yourself and it puts lipstick on you and it puts some nice eyebrows on you and it makes you look like you're fil- and every time I turned to my board, apparently my eyebrows were jumping all over the place. And you can, you can see that my um, my eyebrows can wiggle because they're, they're, they're not real. I'm trapped at home, you know what I mean? Um, I haven't spent a lot of time on my grooming. And so in this moment, the kids laughed and I laughed and we had this just sort of human moment that happens hundreds of times in an in person classroom and that is harder to find remotely, but is possible and can happen. So I recommend you all go to your Zoom settings, give yourself a nice green goatee or whatever is working for you and um and and have a little fun. So that's my faculty report and I'm definitely open to questions.
Hey Jess, um, I I don't know if this is a question more of a comment, but um, I I appreciate it. And I thank you for that perspective. I think one of the dangers of having difficult conversations is being categorical about things. And our brains tend to like shortcuts of making a decision. And that means that sometimes we skip being rational about things. So one thing that we should always challenge ourselves in any situation and inside the school, whatever it's thinking about, is about double checking that we're not putting things in buckets where they don't belong. And and that's what I mean by being categorical. So um, I think you made a good example. The the fact that we got that negative feedback didn't mean that that person, we could put that person in a in a bucket of races and whatnot, and they were not questioning um, whether or not racism was an issue or something that that exists. But I think what what we can categorically say is that if there is any hint of it, any issue being present in the AMSA community, we need to address it. And that's a part that I think we got a lot of strong reaction from regardless of the approach and all these other things, which again, we we checked on and we we want to make sure that we're not doing things the wrong way. So I I definitely appreciate with that. I hope, you know, we're sure that feedback feels that way, even though um, you know, you got a lot of responses back as a as a, as a response to their own feedback. But uh, but hopefully, and I agree with you, I I don't want to assume that there are camps on things that we can categorically say are part of what we all want at AMSA. There may be camps in the approach on how we address those things, but not on the fundamental issues and and the fact that we're all on the same side. So I appreciate that and I agree.
We we might all take different paths, but we all have the same goal. We're on the same team.
Thank you.
Jess, I I appreciate that that perspective as well, just um, you know, like Raoul Raoul said, it's it's important to hear that and to kind of all be reminded. And I think, you know, just to even go back to what I had said at the beginning, the the way we do it does matter. You know, I I part of me, part of me is reminded and I hear my mother's voice saying, you know, like, it's not always what you say, it's how you say it. She didn't sound like that either. Um, she'd kill me if she could. Um, but I think it's, it is what you say. I mean, the older I get, the more I realize, no, it it is, there is some some weight to what you say. But really in in how we go about communicating that, right? And I said to Roger earlier, communication is my thing. This is what I do every day is help people communicate effectively. And there is something to be said for it. But the thing I think that remains through it is doing so with respect on both sides, on receiving and delivering the the information is important to remember and can't just be sort of disregarded and, but also doing it without judgment, delivering and receiving without judgment, especially when the topics are so important and so heated and so divisive that that's the only way we're going to get through this, right? Is to not ignore and kind of brush under, but let's have the hard conversations, right? I say this to the girls all the time. The good stuff is on the other side of discomfort. So let's get through it. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you, Maura. Other questions or comments for Jess? Well Jess, uh, thank, thank you for your feed, feedback. I think you have a, you know, I think that the various uh, feedbacks are important. Yeah, and you have a very challenging position to present feedback that may not, and most likely is not your personal opinion, but you have to present and coach the group, the group of feedback, the group of different feedbacks that you have received and bring forward to us. And if we don't hear it, we can't react to it. So I think, uh,
I, I think also, I think also, and um, you know, Mr. Montesian said that everybody who, who had come to him was in support. I think if you were a faculty member who was feeling uncomfortable, you would not probably feel as comfortable going to you, those feelings are harder to share publicly and especially up the chain. So I, I, I have to play that role even when it's, even when it's difficult. And there have been times in AMSA's history where voices of, we didn't hear about the churn until it was too late and it was too big because there weren't channels for it to bubble up.
Yes, agreed. I was there with you. Um, yeah, and keep, keep providing the feedback. As hard as it is to hear, I think it is much better for us to hear and react than to do stuff in under a bush or a rug. Alright, uh, it is 8:15. I'd like to take a five-minute break. And then we'll resume with Chair Business and Committee Reports. Um, first, before we go on, um, in our new, trying out our new policy, our new practice, um, are there any discussion items that we wish that were, that came up from the parent or teacher representative that we wish to discuss further later in, at the, in the meeting? Alright, hearing none.
I had, I had one actually. Um, I'm sorry, I did have a note. Um, in, in the survey, there was another question, actually, one of the last ones that talked about how do you anticipate the rest of the school going? School year going? And it was a fairly, uh, borderline to us. I think that maybe, you know, if we could have a few minutes conversation about my holo just didn't bring it up sooner, I
No, it's So the question, so the, the discussion item is in regards to how the rest of the school year.
Do you know that one, Ellen?
It's just optimistic. How optimistic are you feeling?
Yeah, and it was less than
Oh, the kids?
No, I think it was the teachers.
No, the teachers were ninety-seven point five. The kids was
So it was the kids?
Two point
Yeah, they were on the C level.
Yeah, yeah. So I was a little worried about that. I had, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up sooner when we were having that discussion.
It's fine.
Alright, we will, um, so noted, rest of the school year, particularly kids, uh, student focused. Alright, that will be before the, uh, that will be in the meeting wrap-up. Ellen?
Um, Mike Naraki is in the waiting room and he needs somebody to let him in.
Sarah?
Oh, you're in now? Oh, okay. Alright, sorry, he got in.
Alright, alright, who let Mike in? Alright, um, Chair Business, I have only one item to discuss and it is, uh, starting the initial plans for the offsite. Yeah, it just came to, came to realize that, you know, the offsite clearly will be a virtual meeting. You know, we're planning it in January. And there's no way that we can do any, my opinion reinforced by many other, other people I've talked to, is there's no way we can do a six or eight hour offsite as one Zoom meeting. That would just be immensely exhausting and not productive. So I'm looking at
We did talk about that in Governance Committee, Robert, uh,
Oh, good.
Yeah.
What, what was, you want us?
So we were proposing two shorter, um, or when I got to my governance report, I was gonna talk about it, but two shorter sessions. So maybe doing one where we do the diversity training or collusion training and then one where we do strategic planning. So like three hours each or whatever we landed on.
Yeah, I was, um, I was think, I had an idea, it was, that was pretty close to that. Um, you know, two or three sessions focused on one topic each. I'm thinking two hours-ish. Because that's about, I think that's a really productive time slot. Because, you know, it, you know, as it, we are now, uh, two and a half hours into our meeting. Um, it's, it's, it's really hard.
I'm fading fast.
Why don't, why don't, how about as a follow-up that you put that in, uh, in the next governance meeting and I'll join you?
Yep, I'll add that into the agenda.
Great. You can brainstorm some more there and come back with a proposal for the board. Uh, okay, uh, it's it for Chair Business unless I missed anything.
Hey Roger, I, I realize we don't really have the schedule and, and uh, as a topic in the agenda, but I do wanna give a quick update from the Survey Task Force, if I may.
Alright.
And then pretty quick, just, uh, just to say that the task force met and we reviewed the questions for the fall survey. For the fall, we um, kept the total number of questions about the same for both surveys, the staff and and the family surveys. And, but we did decide to open the, the survey window later this year just because we had a later start and it kinda makes more sense. So the survey's gonna be open from November 30th to December 14. Uh, so, so that's the overall update. And Ellen, I believe we submitted the questions to Panorama this week, right? Yes. So on, on track for that timeline, but just wanted to mention it. So we, we're targeting reviewing the results in, um, hopefully the, the February meeting, just because we think it might be too soon to, to in January, if it goes mid-December.
Yeah, since, that makes, that makes sense. Since the, the meeting in January is, uh, in the first week of January. So I, I think, I think targeting the February meeting makes sense. Excellent.
That's all.
Thank you for the update. Other Chair-related business. Hearing none, uh, Development Committee, Ben.
You're on me, Ben.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Alright, perfect. I was saying amazing things, right? Um, so I only have a couple of slides here tonight, but I think they're, uh, important slides to kinda give you a, an overview of what, um, advancements we're doing on the Development, uh, Committee. So in Development Committee, we've been talking a lot for the last two months on actually breaking down strategies, right? And, and coming up with an overall view of what is our goals from a development point of view. And, and really what we did was we broke it down into, um, four categories. And each of those categories, we kind of assigned a member of the Development Committee to kinda own that and start thinking through what are the engagement strategies? What do we need to do for these particular, uh, stakeholders and these audiences? And, and really what it came out of it was, uh, some, some, uh, some great ideas from everyone. So the first group that, uh, we talked about was, uh, our families. So basically those are existing ones and alumni families. How, how do we actually reach out and, and talk to them? What are the messages we bring to them? And, and what kind of, uh, activities can we do for engagement? Um, the second one is alumni, or the first one actually is families and, and uh, thank you to, uh, Maura. She's gonna be uh, building off of her already, uh, engagement with the families. Um, and, and, and working on those messages. The alumni was the second group of folks that, you know, we've been in, uh, a school for quite a long time and we actually are starting to gather a, a very nice alumni um, group of folks. And I, I think there's a, a message and an engagement there because of what they have to offer, their experiences they had during school, their experiences after school, and give them opportunities to give back. The third, and, and Roger's gonna be heading up that one, so appreciate that. Um, the, the third one is the community. I mean, we, we have four core towns, but we have a lot of communities as Ellen showed in, uh, the statistics of where all the students come from. And these aren't gonna be just, um, your traditional, uh, communities of businesses and things like that. But, um, as Cindy can attest to, you know, there's opportunities to engage with the civic community with different trades in the community, our universities or colleges and, and just the general area. And, and really, community means that it's giving back to an area that, that supports them and they support us. So it's, it's a great relationship to build. And the fourth one, uh, I'll, I'll end up, uh, looking more into and actually, uh, kinda driving is kinda what I do in my day job anyways, which is engaging with corporations, both like locally, nationally, um, looking at foundations and thinking about what is our message and how can we look there? And, and the combination of these four areas, I think, is, is important for us to, to have an idea of that one message is not gonna be, uh, um, the same across all four, right? And so for instance, uh, we worked in our last Development Committee meeting to talk about the first letter we'll release out to the families. And, uh, Ellen did a great job of pulling that together. And it's really reaching out with a message to the families on how they can give back, how their participation in, in this type of, um, uh, engagement with our school can actually help with the other three parts of this strategy. Um, the, the ideas around each one of those things is that, um, go to the next slide here. Is basically that, you know, for each of those four strategies, we wanna talk about and break down, what are the financial investments? What are those things that those, uh, each groups of folks can actually, uh, look at and to make a difference to our school? Um, a, a ten dollar, uh, engagement from a family or an alumni is, uh, is, is super important. Uh, maybe a little bit larger from the community and from the corporations, but all together, um, they come and they bring a lot of, uh, financial value to the school. But we didn't also wanna just focus on just financial investments because it's not just all about money. It's not that if we had more money, we could do something else. But we also look at, you know, some of our engagements with our corporations, with our community, even with our families and our alumni. What kind of products and services could they actually provide our school? Um, we saw with, um, different, uh, with Thermo Fisher providing a, um, the microscope, but then also thinking about services. Tapping into our families and our alumni and our community, what kind of, uh, provide, or services can they provide? Is it, is it, uh, talking at school? Is it providing what they do in their actual work, uh, and providing that kind of service? So we didn't wanna just focus, one, on financial, but two, give opportunities to give products or, or donate your services to, to help out. The other, uh, piece is that for each one of those four categories, we, we're coming up with different, uh, brainstorms around engagement activities, right? And so obviously with COVID, it makes it a much more difficult, um, piece, but we saw, you know, with the success of the golf tournament, that's one activity. We talked about, you know, um, the ability to have some sort of, um, engagement with around, you know, whether it's a gala or something like that. Obviously, we'll, we'll work on different ideas as we move forward. But it's not just about asking for money. It's not just about asking for product and services. But it's also getting folks together because by combining the four different, um, focus areas of stakeholders, we can actually, uh, generate ideas and generate collaboration that I think can lead to a, a lot of great things for the school. Without, um, the next step, which is the key measurements for success, I mean, I, there's no real, we, real way to see how well we're doing or, or where we can improve or, or where our options are for, uh, our capitalizing some great ideas. So we all discussed, uh, different, different, uh, measurements and, uh, so, so many, I will get you those, uh, those SMART goals. Um, but some of those ideas around, you know, for, uh, particular families, how do we measure participation of all the families and what is that percentage? And how can we help other folks, uh, considered, uh, to, to participate more? Uh, as we look into a, um, a community and alumni, again, it's, it's about adoption and, and reach out and getting folks to get invested. Um, giving their time, you know, money or, or product service, like I said. But just being, um, uh, inquisitive, asking us what they can do and, and where we can, uh, tap into them. Because the more we build a, a network of, of folks, the more when things come up and we, we do need for some sort of engagement to augment what we have here at school for resources, um, we wanna be able to do that. Key measurement for, uh, community and for corporations, you know, we talked about adding, uh, to our list. Um, Mark Vito's done an amazing job at gauging corporations and, and different companies around the area. Um, Cindy has a lot of great, and Mark does this as well, a lot of relationships with the, the civic community and things like that. But we wanna start looking at, uh, creating, um, uh, an engagement strategy or, or keeping track of the people that we've talked to and and have, uh, over the course of a year, you know, can more communications to be able to have an engagement with them. So the, the key measurements for success will be important. And then through all of these different four areas, we wanted to bring together one single calendar of events. Because if we take a look at what our calendar events are, what the school calendar events are, what the potentially PTO's calendar events are, we wanna make sure we align all of our activities so that we're, um, uh, conscious of our engagements, but also, uh, provide opportunities throughout the year that's, um, you know, at different times to, uh, to appeal to our, our different groups. Um, so I think, you know, it's, it's important to understand that, um, if we only took one strategy, only had one letter and we only had one way to reach out to one set of folks, you know, we, we may be limiting our, our, our reach, but also our opportunity. So I think tonight, we just wanted to talk about that and, you know, give folks a, a little bit of idea that, you know, the strategy around development's gonna be, uh, evolving. Um, the reports here moving forward from Development Team will start looking at, uh, what kind of financial investments and products and services. We'll start reporting on some of our key measurements for success so we can see how each of us are, are engaging. And it may give you the opportunity to look back and say, you know what? I'm not on the Development Committee, but I do have relationships at certain corporations or I am in contact with an alumni and let me reach out to Roger and, and connect the two. Or maybe you wanna broker conversations with, uh, some of the ways you engage with your community and, and through civic or, or even through al- alumni of your own universities, they, they like to invest in things. So, um, corporations, you know, I, I like to tell my story. And this is where we'll be talking a lot with, um, with the families as well as other, other companies. You know, Microsoft's a great company and, and, and they give for every hour I donate here to, to, um, to the, uh, the school, they pay twenty-five dollars. For every dollar that I donate, they give a dollar back. And for every piece of equipment that I buy off the, the Microsoft Company Store, as we'll see, uh, I'm gonna do, and I've been working with Mr. Morgan in the gaming club around the Xbox and doing donation there. Um, they'll also match that, that donation. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for us out there um, with different families and with different corporations to, uh, for us to leverage that and take advantage. So I, I figured tonight, we would just give you everyone a kind of an overview of the, the strategies that we're going after, the, the, uh, attention to our stakeholders and an hour of messaging is, is going to be, uh, set up. And then how we kind of break down in terms of, uh, uh, our team and, and who's been doing that. So um, love to hear some feedback. If you have some now, um, obviously reach out. And, uh, and if you have ideas or ways that you believe would be helpful for us, uh, that'd be great. So happy to answer any questions or, or to have, uh, hear your thoughts on, on what we, what we've been doing.
Ben, I do have a question, but it's not a big question. It's more that you had mentioned um, people that were, um, related to the families, alumni, community and corporations. And Maura was related to families, Roger was with the alumni. You did not mention anyone with community.
Oh, Cindy, I said Cindy. So I said Cindy was the one that was in, yeah. And you'll see on the, on the, um, slide, you'll see Cindy's, uh, smiling face as well. Yeah, I'm sorry. So Cindy will be
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, yes, alright.
Yeah, no problem. So I think this is, uh, maybe a little bit different approach than, than what I had seen with the Development Committee, but I think this is great. I think everyone seems to be committed on the team, on the committee to, to figure this out and to, to really focus on our messages. So hopefully we have success and I know we will have success and we'll see, um, once we set some more goals and, and start looking at what, what is, um, uh, what we're, we're trying to achieve for a given year, uh, we, we can report more on that. So.
Ben, it's Liz. I think the four buckets is a great idea. I think it makes complete sense. So I hope it really is able to structure things for the, for the, uh, team.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I think this was a good breakdown and I, I think, you know, there's subparts to each one of these, Liz, you know, that we'll, we can talk about and you know, um, uh, the way we'll message and, and, and reach out and, and engage and and I think, you know, we talked about how to keep track of who we do engage with and how to, you know, continue on that conversation and and make it a long-term relationship, not just a, um, a one-time event, right?
Hey Ben, uh, one question for you. If, if I were a parent and wanted to say, you know, here my, my company XYZ has a corporate match also, how would I share that with the Development Committee?
So there's a couple of different ways. That's a great question, Roger. So one of the ways families can do that is, um, one, uh, make a donation and, and, and sign up AMSA for, uh, their company's, uh, program, right? Um, if, if you have any challenges with that, Mark Vito's been, um, uh, raising his hand to say, reach out to him at the school. Um, he'll help you walk through that process. That, that's what I did at Microsoft. Uh, AMSA wasn't set up. I reached out to Mark. He had to fill out a few forms. We went back and forth a few times to get them filled out correctly. And now, um, Microsoft's officially set up. So that, that's one way to do it. Um, you're more than welcome, obviously, Roger, as you know, to, to reach out directly to our Development Committee. So if you're part of a family, alumni, community, corporations, and you're, and you're hearing this message, um, you can reach out to us directly and, and that'll be, um, we'll be more than happy to have a conversation. I'll have it or e- either one of the leads on the, on the particular areas, uh, would do that. So and Mark would probably be the best bet from a, uh, officially getting it, um, the information needed to get, uh, AMSA set up at your, uh, your company's, uh, donation part.
Well, I was sort of asking, thank you for that answer. I'm actually sort of asking a similar question. How do we, for example, how do we publicize for other parents that work for example, how do we publicize for other parents that work for Microsoft that this program exists and they could help AMSA too?
So we we talked on our last development committee uh engaging with Mike Finkel about putting on the website some of those uh rolling or 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 places to click and link. So that that was one way to do it. Um, and we'll just continue to to communicate that out with when we add more more companies.
All right. Now, thank you. So but in the short, in the short term, I guess a parent would reach out to.
To Mark Vito, yep.
To Mark Vito and they'll take it from there.
Yep, and Mark is on the committee, so he'll help uh coordinate with us if he needs any help.
Great.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right. Liz, Education Committee.
Take it off mute. Um, so the Education Committee met last week and we went through the process of setting up the um SMART goals for the year. And so we ended up with three goals that I just wanted to share, although um Samini stole my thunder because she actually already identified one of our goals, but we'll wait on that. But the first goal is, and and I worked with Sarah to get the wording right on this one. But the first goal is really around the accountability plan. So there's two parts to it. One is that the Education Committee is reviewing the accountability, um, the academic progress towards the accountability plan every year. Um, and so we're making sure that whatever is being reported in the annual report is being reviewed with the um Education Committee first. And then the second part of it is that every five years, when the um the uh charter is uh, when it goes through the renewal process, we want to make sure that the new accountability plan is also reviewed with the Education Committee. So we have two parts to that first accountability plan goal. Uh, the second goal is around the program of studies. And one thing we want to make sure is that every year, the Education Committee is um having a chance to review the uh program of studies and just ask any questions before it gets finalized. And then the third goal is obviously specific to um this year and what we're going through. And that is just to investigate and recommend what new technology should be continued um when we return to uh back to school. So it seems like it would be worth reaching out to both staff and students to to get it, get input from all of them to kind of figure out what they're finding um to be working really well and what sort of technology they find to be very engaging. Um, it was interesting because I think, as I've mentioned a couple of times, we do have a couple of students on the Education Committee. And so we we brought this up and asked this question at our meeting last week. And they were actually surprisingly less technology focused. They were looking forward to returning to class and not having it be so much technology involvement, which we thought was kind of interesting. Because obviously, we want to make sure that the students are engaged with technology and are up to date. But they're actually looking forward to having less technology and more in person. So we found that to be um very refreshing. So um anyway, so those were the three goals that we've identified um for this year. And uh, given that we will only be um, we have reviewed the new accountability plan that was sent to the state that the board already uh voted on. Um, so sometime after the new year, we will um, as those uh measures are reported and and pulled together, we will be uh reviewing those. But um as for as for the others, we will uh we'll be working towards those throughout the school year as well. Any questions for the Ed Committee?
I I have a question, Liz.
Yes.
So with regard to that third goal, i- is it important to keep the focus on technology or do we want to ask the question more broadly to say, what did you like about what was hap- like anything that you would take as, okay, I'd like to bring this back? Or is there a reason to just focus on the technology? To your point, it may not be the only lesson and maybe that's not where we need to focus. That's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that obviously, technology is a big piece, especially given that, you know, technology is a big focus of AMSA. Um, so, you know, there has always been a question around how much technology do we want to be part of um the classroom? There's been, you know, there there was been a number of years where we've looked at, you know, should it be one-to-one? Should everybody be working off a laptop or or device, you know? But I think that, you know, we're not sure that that's really what it should be. Now, that's not to say that, I think that one of the things, if we've learned nothing else over the the course of the last six months, our students have proved to us that they can use technology um and they, you know, they're able to, they're they're trained on it. The question is, how much do they really need to be engaging with technology um on a daily basis in class? Because at the end of the day, and a number of us uh brought this up just based on our conversations with our students, what the students have said is, if they're on Zoom calls and Zoom classes all day long, and then they have to do their homework at night and they're on technology more, if there is a definite fatigue of uh, you know, being on devices so for so many hours during the day. So the, you know, really, I think there has to be a the right balance of using technology when it's appropriate and then, you know, getting away from technology when they can. Because I think that's one of the things that they haven't had that that option um over the course of the last six months to get away from the technology. And it it was a little interesting to hear that they were a a bit tired of it and looking forward to face-to-face. But I do think that it it'll be important to to survey both students and teachers to kind of get a sense of what what they've learned over these past six months and what best practices they can take back to the classroom uh once they return.
Other questions for Liz?
Just that if you have the goals done, then uh send them to me because I'm going to try and plug them into that template.
They are already in board on track.
Awesome. I'll go, I'll go over there. Thank you.
Can I just follow up, Liz? I mean, I think when we're talking about technology and education, I think from a teacher's perspective, the critical question to ask is, does the technology advance our ability to educate? Not necessarily what one person or a group of people, whether the kids want it or the teachers want it. But really, what we're all about is educating. So if the technology helps us educate kids, then we use it. If it's just bells and whistles and it gives, you know, then then we don't need it, right? It's all, it's it, the the fundamental question has to be educating.
Yep, no, I I absolutely agree with you, Jess.
And I think this being online has shown that it can be an educated educational tool. But also, it's fun to kind of see kids say, I was being educated without all of the bells and whistles too. Just so that's, it's a very nice perspective to to remind ourselves that um we don't need one-to-one Chromebooks to learn stuff. Although when we are stuck in our own homes, it's a good tool to have. What would we be if we didn't have it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Liz, and congratulations on the uh completing your SMART goal, getting your SMART goals documented. I'm the Governance, Sheila.
Hi. So I already talked a little bit about the board offsite. Uh, we did start kind of brainstorming on that. We will continue that next month and invite you, uh, Roger as well. But yes, we did decide that doing an all-day meeting via Zoom would be not productive and and exhausting. Although it would be interesting to see what else Raul could put behind him because I've been watching him change up his background now this evening. But um, so we, you know, that aside, we could have some kind of contest maybe for the best background.
I know you have the AMSA background.
Um, so yeah, we did work on that. Um, uh, so media has been fantastic. And I'm going to very, very, very briefly share my screen um to show people, hold on. I'm at work, so I'm trying desperately not to share something I shouldn't be sharing. Um, so hold on, let me share my screen and
We're all at work right now, right? Because we all work from home.
Where is it? All right, I'm not going to share my screen. I'm too tired. Um, so so Mina ever has been in touch with all the board chairs about uh tracking documents she has for the um, you know, to track our SMART goals and to look at what our priorities are. And and one of the conversations we've been having in Governance Committee is just trying to not lose the history and not keep reinventing the wheel and keep having the same conversation, you know? One of the things I saw when we did our vision offsite, um, the second offsite that we've done since um with Nick and Cindy and and Ben and myself been on the board, was there was a lot of frustration, I think, on the part of some of the um, in my business, we call them the old buffalos, which is a term of endearment, Jess, Sarah, Ellen, and those of you who have been around a while, Roger. Um, you know, not lose the things, you know, and keep doing the same thing over and over again, but to be able to track that. So I think we've come up with a document, well, I say we, really, Samini, who's done fabulous work and who is just a great thinker, um, to try to keep a lot of that archived and and in process and in flow. So we're going to work with the board chairs on getting SMART goals um into that document and using that as a strategic planning tool. Um, so I'm very grateful to her about that. The um other takeaway from this month's meeting um is, and I know Mike Finkel has been included um in this as well, is just looking at our board recruitment and what our needs are and how we accomplish that. And, you know, what we have on our website and, you know, what tools we have to kind of do some outreach and try to get in, you know, um candidates who would fit our needs right now. So we're working on that as well. Um, and and just looking at, is there social media outreach? Is there some kind of little video we could do or a little, you know, um, kind of cheat sheet that we can have? So that's another thing that we're looking at right now in um Governance. And I think that is about it for my update today. I don't know if anyone has any questions on any of that.
I know. Um, I I just have one thought that I think I'm I'm not sure where is appropriate to discuss, but we've also talked about being more out there with regard to um telling the AMSA community what the board does and why we do what we do. So I'm wondering between Ben's work and what he's talking about and what you just said, Sheila, whether there were some converging opportunities for us to go do that as well. Because it feels like uh we we want to sort of um give the community a little bit more. I mean, apart from these meetings, but just also be able to say, okay, we're here and we're listening and these are the kinds of activities we're working on. And that also plays into what Mara Mara, you're doing with regard to the family outreach itself. So I I'm just thinking about like, well, how do we then play together so that we're achieving several of these goals at once?
I think another piece of that that I've always struggled with as the parent of a non-core town family um is really doing that outreach beyond the Marlboro area, which I get it. We saw the chart. We have a lot of Marlboro kids. I get it. My town has sixty-six. So but we do have other communities and other um things we can leverage as well. So I think that's an important part of that conversation too. All right.
Great. Thank you, Sheila, and thank you, Samini. So Governance is set. Finance, Kristen.
A lot of finance tonight, everybody. All right, uh, I gotta share. Uh, gonna start with um our policy. So uh, the reason why I needed to have a quick mini meeting. Can you see the screen? All right, I'm trying to get realigned here. Uh, I can't assist for current policy on the screen. It's up from somebody.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
You're breaking up a little bit.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, better.
Good. Uh, the reason why we had to have the meeting to ma- uh, the reason for that meeting recently was to have an approval of a um a spend I um associated with increasing the bandwidth for the school. Uh, there was a contract, there was a very short timeline to be able to uh obtain significant discounts in school money. Uh, and and the policy, as it had been written, uh, required the school to go to the Board Trustees for approval on unlimited items of a very small amount of money in excess of of basically twenty thousand dollars. Um, so as a result of that, we decided to modify the internal policy. So this is me informing you of that.
You're still breaking up a bit? I don't know if it would help if you turn your video off.
Sure.
As as much as I don't want to stop seeing you while you talk.
Have to find it. So we've lost it.
It'll still be a Zoom bar somewhere. If not, you can just keep going. We'll try on this thing.
I found it. Okay. So we changed the policy to uh provide the Finance Committee and the Treasurer uh more response, more ability to approve some of these ad hoc costs when they come up and not involve the entire Board Trustees. For the most part, these are operational issues. Ellen and and Leah and the team uh should have more flexibility to engage. Um, but we still have the Finance Committee to be able to approve uh the out-of-budget items. And then um we have caps in place of a hundred thousand dollars so that there would be no outstanding excess of that that would go without the board approving. And any approvals that are made would be notified to the Board Trustees. Um, in addition, if the Finance Committee is unavailable to meet, then the Treasurer can approve uh certain purchases up to fifty thousand dollars per contract, but no more than a hundred thousand dollars in a year so that the policy is not abused. And again, the Treasurer will inform the Finance Committee and the Board of Trustees to ensure that there's no issues associated with that. Um, this other purchase that I mentioned, clearly it was necessary. Uh, and there was no risk to the school. Uh, the policy that was in place prevented um anyone put a whole entire board to approve. That's why we had this at our session. So just letting you guys know. Uh, second part of the meeting is to review the financials. So let me shift to my, move my one screen and then share another here. So excuse me.
Kristen, you're still breaking up a lot. So maybe if you position yourself either closer or further away from your mic, that might make things better.
I am very close right now.
Maybe. But if you're good at the moment, so maybe that distance is good.
Okay, so I'll stay right here. Can everyone see the new screen? Oh, no, I have to share. Hold on. All right.
Always do.
You see the financials?
I see a big spreadsheet.
Perfect, okay. Um, this month, September, uh, results. Um, I have some highlights here to point out, but in total, our income September was twenty-three five nine bricks, one point four down seven one thousand. In blue, I highlighted the items that are more related to the school being in-person, purchasing remote products, like decrease. Um, we also had a side on television uh within just last month. We received favorable news uh on an update that drove an increase in tuition. The next result will come out in November, December, and I'm ready to see how that aligns. Um, whether or not it continues to be high or if there is a reduction there. Uh, there was good news I saw posted today that the governor had uh approved to budget associated with so we're being optimistic that they'll see really here. Uh, in the expense category, we also have some favorability. In the expense category, we also have some favorability. Total expenses were $1.175 million versus a budget of $1.35 million, a $165,000 decrease. The blue items relate to revenue programs involved, so student programs, who's first to education are obviously my main level expense that we would expect or in person. It has not directly related to funding and green light that starts the process and has specific funding, but are also benefiting from renewable education in terms of costs. So facilities, well, solid reach leaves, and our instructional supplies will be one of those things that they have in place. So net-net, with the lower income but with the favorable expenses, the surplus was positive for the month by $94,000, almost double what the anticipated budget was for the month of September. On a year-to-date basis, we have similar, we have very similar numbers, so I'll just look at them in total. Our revenue is down by $25,000, so it's very close to actual, but our expenses are down by more in the tune of 350,000. And therefore, we are seeing most of that spend go to online basis. Again, this is for the time period where the schools are pretty remote. Those expenses may increase. There's also some grant expenses that are noted here. Those are capitalized expenses rather than expenses that go through PL. They're a couple of those that will show up on the app, that will not show up on the other side. So just an item to note. And from a capital perspective, a good monthly is a result of the reduction in expenses. So a good, a good month, given the circumstances from a financial perspective. Any questions on the monthly results for September?
I'm just gonna say that we lost at least 10%, of what you said.
Wow. Wow, I don't know what changed. I guess maybe somebody turned the debate on in the other part of the house, and it's taken my bandwidth.
But I think I got the gist of what you said. All right. Other, other questions for Kristen? All right, thank you, Kristen. I think we are ready for meeting wrap-up. I think this is the point where we can pull in the one topic that was proposed, discussion item that was proposed. We have the discussion of rest of the school year for the kids. How would we, what questions does the board have on that topic?
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, at the moment.
Unfortunately, I just found that there was a little warning sign, and I just switched my, my audio. So sorry if anyone has any financial questions. My question was related to, and we're just talking about technology, survey.
Break up.
The technology fatigue, right? But how are we going to help the kids have a better outlook going forward? Like, what, what, what can be done to do to help that?
So I've been thinking about this since you asked the question a little bit ago, which is, is nice, gave you a chance to process, Roger, for a little feedback there. Kristen, I have, we've never had a problem with your audio ever, and it is just so bumpy tonight that I, I don't even think I heard your whole question. But, but let me, I'll just pass along what I'm thinking, and we can talk about it another time, too. So I think one of the interesting things that we haven't done yet with that is that, as I said, Brianna is breaking that up by grade. It may be very, very interesting to see if there's a difference between grades, or is this something that's kind of widespread? And I think then we can kind of, if it's by grades and it seems like there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of concern in the younger grades or the older grades, we can look at that and, and see what else we can do. You know, I think a lot, too, for the kids, right? There's, there is loss here. There's loss for, for all of us. And when we all talk as adults about all the things that we're unhappy about, about the situation right now, it's the same things that the kids are saying, right? They miss their friends. I miss my friends. They, they miss going, getting up and the structure of going someplace. So do we all, right? So I think we probably look into see where the grades, is there any patterns there? And then, you know, through class meetings and student government meetings, see if there's different activities and things. The clubs are just getting up and running. The other thing, too, is I think when we ask that question to the teachers, the teachers know that we're talking about how optimistic are they about the school year and teaching? But the, the question might have been too broad. We just asked them how optimistic they were about the next, you know, about the, the next week's coming up. They could, they could have, some could have, especially the young ones interpreted that to, how do you feel about just the virus in, like, life? And how optimistic are you feeling about all of that? So I think maybe we can break that down and get a little bit more specific with them, which I think would be important to do. And then, and try to get them involved in more activities. And we need to talk to the upperclassmen, the seniors in particular, about how to make their senior year special as we go into these weeks ahead. So, you know, there's loss across the board, and I think we need to, we need to address that. And, you know, the school councils, I know, are working with the kids and that they will, you know, continue to do that. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough situation. But I think, you know, Mike and Brianna and I can work on getting some more specific questions and tease that out a little bit. Mike, I saw you popped in. Do you have something you wanted to jump in and say? No?
No, I was just turning my camera back on. But I am listening, and I, I agree. So we can, we can make the adjustments to our surveys, for sure.
Yeah, we can tease that out. I mean, you know, it's a general question, but like you brought up, if, if it looks like there's items that we need to pull out of that, then that kind of informs our next set of questions. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, Ellen, I can just add in real quick. I, the, the survey that we sent to the students, I actually, I have a Monday morning check-in group of seniors. Some of those questions came directly from that group. I always like to ask the students what questions we should be asking the student body. We'll continue that trend. And I just started a principals council. Last Monday was the first meeting, and it's on our agenda for, for next Monday with the principals council to meet and to specifically look at this data and to also come up with questions for the next survey, which I believe will be most likely the first week of November when we'll survey the students once again. So it is, it has student voice behind it, and it will just, it will have a little bit more this time around.
Well, thank you, Mike and Ellen. I think this, most, most of this topic is an administrative challenge, not a board challenge. But I would challenge Ellen and Mike to think about how, how can the board support this initiative? Is there technology we can fund? Is there? Mostly, mostly, I think the board level would be involved with either advocacy or funding. So.
How about a vaccine?
I wish.
We'll keep working on it. We, we care about the kids. We want them to have a good experience.
Yeah, we do try. I just wanted to just be careful, you know, just challenge particularly for the board to think about that, that this is not, that we need to watch till a careful line between governance and execution. This is mostly, I think, we, we should be watching this and look for the results of surveys, but we're not going to fix this problem as a board. We can watch over it and, and ask, ask interesting questions, but we're not going to fix it. Does that comment make sense? All right. I think, I think we are now ready for meeting wrap-up. So we have a governance item that's on hold. The action item two was for myself to work with Ben and Samini. That's been on hold, getting through other things, governance, governance to work on the candidate SMART goals for the whole board. Hopefully, that can be a possible agenda item for this next governance meeting. Jill, you and I need to get together to review the executive session minutes, and we're making great progress.
Yes, I've already reviewed them all. But the problem is we're missing more, that, I didn't want to mention this before, but we are missing way more than we have. So I think there needs to be a deep dive into the records and find the rest of them. Because of all the minutes, I'm releasing them all except for one, but I'm missing 37 of, I'm missing, yeah, I only have six of 37 in one category, and I only have, yeah, I guess I'm missing probably 80%. So we need to do a deep dive into the missing minutes. And then the only, the only other comment is, if I'm not taking the executive session minutes for some reason, everybody needs to know that executive session minutes need to be detailed, as much detailed as the regular session. There needs to be a summary of the discussion of each topic, and it needs to be so specific that it's similar to a regular board meeting. And the problem is, I don't think anyone realized that executive session wasn't secret session. It was you have to keep the minutes as detailed as you do any other meeting. So going forward, I want to make sure if anyone does take executive session meeting minutes, they have to be detailed, just as detailed as a regular meeting. So that was my struggle. This is my struggle in reviewing the meeting minutes.
Are you reviewing minutes that are gonna become public, meaning that they're probably from more than two years ago, or are you reviewing things from the last couple of years?
Well, I supposedly am starting from March 31st of 2015, but most of 2015 through 2017 are missing.
I only said that selfishly, just if you have any issues with 2018 or 2019, I can help. But if not, then...
No, you're, you're good. But in general, if anyone does take executive session minutes, they need to be as specific as a regular meeting. They, they're not top secret or anything.
All right. I guess Jill, I can, I think I have, have some of the older minutes. We can take it offline and figure out what to do with that one. Committees, creating SMART goals, we had, we made, made progress on that one. I think we have a couple to go, but we made great progress there. Any new, new action items coming out of the tonight's meeting?
All I have is that Sheila will investigate the protocols for executive committee meeting, and the governance committee will discuss and create an explanation of its purpose and function. And then I have some edits for both meeting minutes.
And just a comment on that. I know we'll look into the answer, but the purpose was not to have to wait for a board meeting to do things like what we just did, to approve something that needed to be done by the school. Having to bring that back for approval for the full board will defeat that purpose. Obviously, we shouldn't abuse that, but like, in this case, for example, I'm assuming that the action was already taken to get that vendor, you know, to take advantage of the, of the offer we had. So if somebody in the board said, "We disagree, we, we don't approve that," it's too late, right? Well, I think it's, it's just, the particular question is just a, is just a governance clarification as to whether, whether the, an action taken by the executive committee must be informed to the board or must the board approve the action that the executive committee took. It's a process question. So I think, I think we can get an answer, official answer from, from governance as to what our process should be there. This is the first executive committee session we ever had. And the, and the executive committee just does have to be announced. We do have to wait 48 hours, etc. It follows all the rules of the other committees. It's just a smaller quorum that is required and designed to take action just like this, where we needed a vote but didn't, but it would be too difficult and too challenging to get the full board together. And the whole meeting took 15 minutes. Very targeted. All right. Any new challenges or discussion on remote participation?
Kristen's microphone.
Thanks, Jess. I was gonna say something, but maybe you can't hear me.
I feel bad. I was trying to get it.
We can hear you now, to quote Verizon. So I do, I think, I think we'll continue to use the best, the practice we've started this meeting to collect items for discussion during meeting wrap-up. And so onward to items for, for the November, actually, it's the, it's a title on my part, December board meeting. We have the governance to draft SMART goals for the board, committees to complete the SMART goals for those who have not, and the board to, if we get to that far, the board to review and approve the board-level SMART goals.
We may have the budget by then, updated budget, possibly.
Budget update.
Sorry, Roger, did you say November or December?
December is our next, early December is our next board meeting. We don't have, due to Thanksgiving, we don't have a November board meeting, but it is our next board meeting. So anything else besides the, I got a budget update possible? And we'll hit the update from governance regarding executive committee. All right. Anything else to discuss? There ain't nothing. I'd like to look for a call to motion, motion to go into executive session and to adjourn this meeting. Executive session, we'll discuss the purchase or lease of facilities as discussed in open session would be detrimental to our position. We will be inviting Ellen. Ellen, help me out on the list of people that'll be invited besides the board.
Mike, Leanna, Bob Baldwin, and Lisa O'Connor.
Motion to adjourn.
What time?
Executive session.
9:25. Do you want a 10-minute break? Yep. So, so I heard a motion to adjourn and go to executive session from Liz.
Second.
Second from Mara.